The Montecito Planning Commission will begin the hearing for September 16, 2013, called to order. Please join us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my nation and to her.
Thank you. Mr. Villa Lobos, will you please make the television coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to everyone. The special planning, special hearing of September 16 will be televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. on the South Coast, Long Polk, San Ines Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Re-broadcast of the special hearings will be on Monday, September 16, at 5:00 p.m., and Tuesday, September 17, 2013, on CSB TV, Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
Commissioner Overall.
Here.
And Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Thank you.
We will now move to the agenda status report. Ms. Black, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission.
Good morning.
This morning, you have two items on your agenda, and we are ready to move forward with both of those items. Turning to the projection report, if I might.
Please.
Your Commission has its next regularly scheduled meeting on October 16, and on that date, we're proposing to bring the general ordinance amendment package to your Commission, which addresses a number of outstanding ordinance issues. On November 20, your Commission is scheduled to meet as well, and at the moment, we just have one briefing scheduled for your Commission, the post-construction stormwater management requirement briefing. And then we are scheduled to meet, if necessary, on December 18, which would be your last meeting of the year. Madam Chair, this morning, I also added the opportunity for the Commission to talk about potential topics for discussion for the 2014 calendar year in the event that we have some light meetings, if your Commission would like to identify some topics for discussion. We'd be happy to hear from your Commission.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I will now turn to the Commissioners. Ms. Brown, might you have some items to offer or to suggest?
Oh, I'm sorry, is this for our further?
This is for 2014, items of interest for the community that Montecito Planning Commission could consider in open session, following up on disaster preparedness, that kind of presentation.
Yes, I do. I would like to suggest that perhaps we look at water issues, not in water rate, not as in water rate, but as in planning. How do we get our water? How much water do we have? Where does it come if we don't have any? And I think that might be an interesting topic for the community to consider. And I'm sure I can pop up with a whole lot of other ideas, but right now, that's the one that seems to be paramount in my mind, as far as a planning topic. Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. Perhaps it's because I'm in real estate, I'm not sure, but I am asked continually, how can I do this? Can I put a building on my land? Can I, what can I do? And how can I avoid this dreaded permit process? My position is that if your project is reasonable, it's not a dreaded process. But there's a lot of questions, setbacks, gates, accessory structures, how does MBAR work with us? A lot of people, after 10 years, still think they have to go through the Montecito Association to get permitted. I think that might be a valuable presentation for the community, just kind of the basic high points of things that you see coming over your desk and how it works.
Interesting. Thank you so much. Commissioner Idelson, please.
Yeah, I would like to add to some of those, the idea of taking some of the most frequently asked questions, the call-in questions that you get in planning, some of the most frequent questions they might be getting at the association level, too, and for the planning department to bring some of those forward that you feel that so many people are asking about, just to cover the general ones. Aside from that, I think, following up with the fire department's presentation, and then with the water presentation, I'd like to see a presentation by sanitary. I think it would be beneficial to the entire community and to planning. I think we would all learn something about their capacity, about their future growth potentials, and how they're going to handle those.
Commissioner Overall, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there are two areas that I'd like to see some focus. One would be a broader, community-wide look at parking and traffic issues. We get involved in them on a specific of, you know, a given road at one time, or a given project at one time. I know in the sequa, sequence, they're supposed to look at cumulative impacts. I'm not sure we look at it quite that way, and I think it'd be worthwhile for us to look at it in a broad spectrum. The other thing I'd like to take a look at would be, although we don't have anything, well, we have, I guess, two ordinance items that have been on the long-range planning schedule for some time, but I suspect that in our collective experience, there are other items in our land use planning where it may not be on the list to have us take a look at it, but would be to go through that and identify some areas in the ordinances and in our guidelines and whatnot where we think we need some updating to make them more applicable to what we're actually faced with on a month-to-month basis. So I'd like those two areas to be looked at.
Thank you so much, and I might add, it might be helpful to the community and to the Commissions to have maybe one joint meeting with MBAR and MPC, so that we can, we and the, can better understand, and the community can understand, how these two organizations are compatible, what their responsibilities are, and that kind of thing. And, let's see, and if we had extra time, if there had been any updates on the Brown Act, that would be helpful to us, and probably to MBAR as well. Does the Commission have any other items? Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This request for additional ideas came rather recently, and I don't know about anyone else, I haven't spent that much time on it. I'm wondering, and Counsel, maybe you can help me with this, should, when we, when we see the community plan calling out for action in the future, for instance, the community plan wanted us, years ago, to have more of an historical register. Anyway, when it's there, what is the, what is our obligation to move on this? Is that advisory, or is that directive? Should we not do things that the community plan called out for? How is that viewed? Is that really dropping the ball, or, you know, it's up to us to take a look at it and give it importance as we see it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, the action items in the community plan are future action items, and there is no timeline that's required in order to address those. So it really, it comes up when your Commission and then the Board sees the work plan, and those get prioritized on an annual basis countywide. Each community plan contains action items, and then those are prioritized each year.
Should we not, should we not move and implement these requirements, directives? How is that viewed? Is that discretionary, or is that something that we should have done and didn't, if we don't?
Chair Burrows and Commissioner Phillips, the Board and your Commission really has broad discretion over the community plan, and it's within your Commission's and ultimately the Board's discretion whether or not to implement those actions.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, I probably should have started this conversation by, we are not asking for additional work.
Right.
And we aren't.
Or it's your funding. It's your funding.
Correct. So we're really talking about things that might be helpful for the Commission to hear about that aren't huge work efforts on the part of my staff. So a number of the things that you've raised are, you know, informational items, I can invite different people to come and speak to your Commission, and that's really what we were looking for. We're not looking for the 10 items in the Montecito Community Plan to implement, because those are work items and do need to be scheduled in the context of the work plan.
Absolutely, and we will be understanding and respectful of that, and I should have mentioned that in the beginning. Commissioner Idelson, please.
Okay, I have one that I don't believe would be, that I think falls within those rules. That is drainage and flood control for this, for our area, which is, I'm sure, very well-known by the people that work in that department, and if they could make a, just a brief presentation outlining the course of action, what happens, and what happens if we have a higher-level rainfall. I think it'd be very, very informative. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, I'd like to tag on to Commissioner Phillips' comment. In the Montecito Community Plan, at the very end, it says, "Community Plan Implementation Program," and it actually says, "Do this within 10 years, five years." Now, I totally understand that, and I would not add, I would not try to add any work to your already cumbersome workload, but I do think we could prioritize, as a Commission, look at this list again, and maybe just revamp and re, you know, regenerate it, and just see if that, maybe there's nothing, maybe some of these things are long dead and gone, or maybe they are really issues that we've stumbled with since 19, you know, '96, when the, when the plan was adopted. So I would, I would actually second your idea, Mr. Phillips, but keeping in mind for all of these projects, they're only to be add-in informational topics to a light agenda, to inform the public, and I hope we can continue to work on the list, too, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Commissioner Phillips, please.
No, I'm sorry.
All right. Counsel, please.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to recommend, when the Commissioners are done giving ideas, just that you call for public comment to see if any members of the public also have want to comment on either what's been suggested, or they have additional ideas.
Absolutely. Is the Commission finished with ideas for this time? Is there anyone in the public that would like to give us an idea, or suggest a topic for further discussion later?
Yes.
Mr. De Forest, please. The microphone right there might work. We welcome you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In the, I must say, the Community Plan, there's a section on cultural resources, and I think that needs, should be tackled. Some implementation of, for the protection of cultural and historic resources needs to be on the table with proper ordinances, because we're having today a sort of a, oh, the historic nature of the project today is sort of falling between two stools, do, does the, maybe a Montecito historical section needs to be added, because the historical preservation issues seem to fall between H-L-A-C, A-Bar, M-Bar, and this Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Victoria Brown, Green. I'm sorry. Jamie Brown, Victoria Green.
Good morning, Commissioners, Victoria Green, Montecito Association. I think that the list of topics that you've thrown out are good. I think that the workshop you did last month was really informative, and I think helpful to the community. You know, I really like the idea of some kind of briefing on just general permit requirements for some of your more straightforward and simple types of applications. We get a lot of questions at the Montecito Association as well, and I think we could give some input as to what might be helpful. Prioritizing the action items out of the community plan, I think, would be something we'd love to participate in a discussion of. So I think you're just headed in the right direction. I didn't, I did let our Board know that this discussion was going to happen at your Commission. I didn't hear any immediate ideas, but I think that what you're talking about really would be helpful to the community, as you have time to take it on, and as staff has time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from the public, the Commission? If not, we will close public comment. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Black, and perhaps Ms. Van Mullen, to look at these suggestions, maybe prioritize them for us, in a way that is respectful of the funding that you have, and the time that you have, and if I could be of any help on that, I would be certainly willing. I'm only a phone call away. Thank you so much. Staying on the projection report for just a moment, a few minutes, one topic of conversation in Montecito has been the 101, and the jurisdiction that this body has in regard to whatever changes might happen there. I've asked Ms. Van Mullen to please address the issue of the jurisdiction of the Montecito Planning Commission in regard to 101. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'll just start by saying, since, that I can address this just in terms of process.
Please.
And, but since it's not in a specifically agendized item, I just caution your Commission that we aren't agendized to have a discussion on the 101 project. But to address your question, as I understand the current, current project, it includes an amendment to the local coastal plan, the coastal land use plan, and since that is a general plan amendment by state law, the Board of Supervisors is the decision-maker on the project. Under the county code, when we have a general plan amendment that affects more than just the Montecito Community Plan area, by county code, the County Planning Commission is the recommending body to the Board of Supervisors on that project. That's both for projects that involve general plan amendments, and for projects that involve countywide transportation. In those circumstances, the county code also provides that the Montecito Planning Commission may provide a recommendation to the County Planning Commission. So the process would go that it would come to the Montecito Planning Commission, the Montecito Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the County Planning Commission, and then the County Planning Commission would make a formal recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors would be the decision-maker on the entire project.
Thank you very much. Ms. Black, please.
Just adding on, we don't have a permit application in yet, so I just wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of that. I think a lot of people assume we already have a permit application, and we don't.
Yes, thank you so much. There is a lot of discussion in the community about this, and this clarifies for us. Thank you. Moving on now to public comment, is there anyone in attendance today that would like to address this body on any subject not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close public comment. If you would like to speak to an item that is on the agenda today, please remember to fill out a speaker slip, and put it in the brown box here at our desk, so that we know to include you in the process. We will now move on to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports, and I would like privilege of the Chair to lead off, if I may, and express appreciation to all of the people that were, that were here on the August 21 meeting on disaster preparedness. This was very well-accepted in the community. We got good publicity on that to get the word out to the community. There were letters to the editor, and other jurisdictions are following up on the same ideas, that the community would be prepared for any disaster that might come along. I did receive a letter to the Commission that I would like to read for you. It was from Ryan Rockerbrand. He was Chief of Emergency Management, and he spoke to us that day. "Commissioners, it was an absolute pleasure to meet and speak with your panel last week. I'm grateful any time I have the opportunity to discuss these important disaster preparedness matters, and I hope it was worthwhile for you. Of course, on behalf of the county and the Office of Emergency Management, we are here to support you and the community, and if we ever, if you ever need us, please do not hesitate to ask. With warm regards, Ryan." And he was just one of the speakers, and we so welcome that. I will now move on to other Commissioners' informational reports. Mr. Overall, please.
In keeping with the theme of Highway 101, I attended the City Planning Commission meeting on this item. It was agendized, it was a briefing by their staff and a discussion by their Planning Commission. I think the one thing that emerged out of that that was most interesting is the city came up with, they're drafting a letter to send to Caltrans, confirming their position on it, but they wanted to make sure that when the environmental report comes back, and the, and the project is presented to them, that it included certain items that were not included in the draft environmental review, and they were quite definite about that. And it raised in my mind that there are things in, excuse me, in the Montecito corridor portion, that at some point in time, we might like to look at, and it would be, I think, in the interest of time, it would be important that those be included in the project when it comes to us and to the County Planning Commission to make recommendations on. So it's just to plant a thought that at some time, it's been, what, a year and several months since we've heard anything about this project, and it's a big project. It might be that in the not-too-distant future, it would be worthwhile hearing it. I know I learned a good bit about what the city's position was and the concerns that they had, so it was interesting. It's available for anybody that wants to review it, it's available on the archives on the city website.
Thank you. Commissioner Idelson, please.
I serve on several redevelopment district oversight boards, and as you know, the redevelopment districts have all been canceled, but they're successor districts, and in the meantime, we have these oversight boards that are, that were created by the state in order to dissolve all of the commitments and work it through. And as we're seeing, things are starting to wrap up, and so some of the funds are being redistributed to the agencies that were taxed in the previous time, and so I just want to report that we're kind of moving forward.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. I guess I should have raised this earlier, but the Office of Emergency Preparedness, I forgot the gentleman's name, but it made, it made me recall that as the fire preparedness presentation was so accepted and helpful, I don't know about you, but I walked away with an awful feeling about an earthquake, and it was reported in the Montecito Journal, in fact, that boats would come and rescue us. And I've been getting a lot of questions about this, and I don't know if his office could do this, and give us just an overview of what we could expect should 101 be interrupted. And, because again, we've done fire a few times, we're kind of getting good at that, maybe, but most of us haven't seen an earthquake, so if that could be on the list, that might be helpful to the community as well.
I would ask staff to please put that as a consideration for further presentation. Thank you. Commissioner Brown, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to your comments about the emergency preparation disaster hearing we had, I just want to remind the public that that remains on the county website, and for viewing at any time. For anyone who missed it, you can take it, you can watch it on your own computer at your own leisure, so, and I highly recommend you do that. I would tell you that I attended the, this month's H-LAC meeting, and I have the dates, but I can't read them here. And at that point, they announced that they will be sending out an RFP for a historic survey report, and the amount of that will be somewhere between $4,500 and $9,000, so the public may be wanting to look forward to that RFP very soon. I attended the MBAR, where they discussed a Moody Sister Cottage for historic review, and then I attended the Montecito Association Land Use Committee, where they discussed a West Mountain Drive project that may come down the road for a lot split, and that, they're going on a website in their upcoming October meeting, so that might be interesting for the public to know about. And finally, I attended the Montecito Association meeting, and they're going to have a number, a November 5 YMCA public forum in connection with their regular land use committee meeting. So I, too, watched the city PC hearing, and I found it, again, very interesting, the bureaucracy about how they, you know, would address the current project on the table, and so I found that quite interesting, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I would add that I attended the September 3 Land Use Committee at the Montecito Association. I also attended the Historic Landmark Advisory Committee meeting, and I do not have that date, but I was there. We will now close Commissioners' informational reports and turn to the minutes. We will now consider the minutes of August 21, 2013. If you have reviewed those, does the Commission have a motion on how to proceed?
I would move, we adopt those minutes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. We will now move to the Director's Report. Dr. Russell, Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, since your last Planning Commission meeting, there were two board hearings, and the Board didn't take up anything of particular interest to Montecito, so I believe Dr. Russell won't be here this morning to give a report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. We will now close the administrative agenda and move to the standard agenda. The first project before us is the Benson addition and setback variance. May I ask that that please be read into the record?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Tom Tassberg, agent for Lori Benson, owner to consider 12 VAR 1 and 12 CDH 1, applications filed on January 10, 2012, and to determine that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Sections 15301 E1 and 15305 A of the State Guidelines for the Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. We have received a number of letters on this issue. I believe that we will be expected to adopt and accept any letter that was more than one page. According to my, yes?
Oh, it's just.
I wanted to say that I have two letters that, one letter from Mark Chitillo and one letter from the Hogans. And I believe all other letters are one page. So Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, I think you also received an email from Ray Stefani, Raymond Stefani. That's two pages as well. And I believe David is going to hand out, handing out a two-page.
I would ask the commissioners to check your letters to make sure that we have.
Two-page summary from the Law Office of Mark Chitillo and then a submission by the Bear family, Boar, Boar family, sorry.
I think it's Boar.
So I think there are five.
Okay. I have only the two.
You should have received, you do not receive the.
I have the Hogan and Chitillo.
And not the email from Raymond Stefani?
No, I do not have that.
It's double-sided, Madam Chair.
Oh, it's double-sided. I do.
Okay.
My apologies.
So those three, and then David's handing the other two out right now.
Then we would need a motion to adopt these, to accept them into the record once we have all three of them. Ms. Black, please.
Mrs. Brown.
Mrs. Brown, please.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt, that we include all of these letters into the record, but I would ask that we have a, maybe a three-to-five-minute break so we might be able to read these letters prior to moving forward.
Good idea. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I just have a comment. I, the material that I receive ahead of time, I think it's legitimate to consider. And we got the material from lawyer, and I think there was one other. I think this last-minute stuff, I mean, I can't do justice to it. I mean, I scanned it, but I mean, if there's anything of real substance in there, we don't have, well, anyway, I just object to taking this stuff in at the last minute and trying to include it. I think it's an imposition on the commission that we shouldn't do. I think if we get it ahead of time, we have a chance to study it. I think it's appropriate. Otherwise, I think it's not.
We certainly prefer to get material ahead of time, but out of deference to the submissions, I would suggest that we take a few minutes to read this so that we're informed before we're asked to make decisions.
So Madam Chair, I'd recommend that you go ahead and take a vote, and then if your vote passes, then you take a five or 10 minutes.
I'll second Ms. Brown's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second that we take a few minutes to consider these letters.
The motion is that we include all the letters into the record as submitted, and then perhaps as a not part of the motion, but just an administrative suggestion that we take five minutes to read these letters so that we can address them with knowledge.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, thank you.
So Madam Chair, now I guess you're going to take like a five-minute break?
Yes, please.
So the public doesn't need to watch you read.
Thank you, yes, please.
So we'll come back at nine, or at 9:40?
Yes. And on the standard agenda, again, if you would like to speak to this issue, please fill out a speaker slip and put it in the brown box at the end of our table. We will now move on to staff report. Mr. Banks, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Brian Banks from the Development Review Division, and I am staff on the project today. The project before you is for the Benson addition and setback variance located in the Miramar Beach neighborhood. This slide will provide some context of as best that I could to get the entirety of that Miramar Beach neighborhood. So for reference, this would be the Miramar Hotel area. And just off-screen here would be that portion of the Miramar Hotel that butts the beach. So the subject parcel would be located right here. A little closer shot of the area. This photo dates back a couple of years, but is, well, you can see here the construction, but is relatively accurate as to what's on the ground there today. Again, the subject parcel being right here. The project before you is for a variance. The requested variance would reduce the required 20-foot setback from the right-of-way down to zero feet and reduce the required five-foot side setback to zero feet consisting with the existing structure footprint as it is today. The project includes a first-floor addition of 132 net square feet and a second-story addition of approximately 80 net square feet. Project also includes an exterior remodel, new doors, windows, and exterior siding. This slide shows the site planned and proposed floor plan of the lower level. So they're broken out into two levels based on the elevations and sections. You'll kind of see how that plays in this sloping lot. So we've identified here as the lower level, staff has identified this as the lower level, and the architect has indicated level zero for reference. The existing footprint of the structure, the dotted line being the property line. So you can see how the existing footprint is essentially built, side yard setback to side yard setback, however, has not taken up the entirety of the front yard area. And the beach would be to the south at the bottom. So the proposed lower floor plan would include a kitchen addition, essentially an entryway and a kitchen addition. And on the upper level, you can see the existing and then the proposed, so above the proposed kitchen addition, there would be a proposed sleeping loft with an interior stairway. Also worth noting is the existing entry to the existing dwelling, and you'll see in the photographs, the Miramar Beach actual road or driveway would be up here, and one would access the site, come down a few stairs, and then walk a gangway or an elevated kind of access near roof level and then entry on the southern side of the house. And you'll see that in the photographs. There's a lot of information here, so I'll try to simplify it here. The existing elevation or existing sections, you can see the Miramar Beach Drive Road here, the existing dotted line here of the existing roof line. And then no changes to the proposed deck or seawall area. So again, the Miramar Beach Drive would be up here. Dotted line representing the existing roof line. So this would be the increase, approximately four feet increase at its most southerly location. This line would be the 25-foot height limit. This section would show the sleeping loft, and again, approximately a four-foot increase in height. The elevations try to depict the existing residences on either side here. So probably the most informative would be the north and south elevation. So the south elevation would be the view looking from the beach north towards the mountains. And this would indicate that sleeping loft portion here. Existing roof is approximately in this location here. Again, approximately a four-foot increase in height. And then on the north elevation, dotted line indicating existing roof line. This shows proposed. This would be the neighbor to the east. And you'll see in the photos, there's a fence line and the neighbor to the west on top of their roof area. These photos show the existing dwelling here with the neighbor again to the east, the neighbor to the west. This is that fence line that was shown in those elevations. The proposed, oh, I'm sorry, and backing up, this is that existing walkway. So you enter from the Miramar Beach area, or Miramar Drive area, and walk essentially in elevated fashion over and a small pathway down to these stairs at the south end and access the dwelling on the beach side. So part of the proposal today would be to eliminate that. The new kitchen, first-floor addition or lower-floor addition with loft above would be here. That would provide for reconfiguration of the entry and getting rid of this elevated walkway. These photos show the existing, or this photo shows the existing dwelling from the beach and the neighbor to the east, neighbor to the west. This photo shows the installed story poles viewed from this existing walkway looking north, just for reference. Again, here's that walkway and the neighbor's fence. These views are provided by the architect to provide a rendering of what the beach view would look like post-construction. The project would be exempt from CEQA based on Section 15301, which provides for the exemption for the additions, and Section 15305, which provides the exemption for setback variances, not creating a new parcel. Project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan and Coastal Land Use Plan, and is consistent with the Article II zoning ordinance. Staff's recommendation is that you do approve the project consistent with the findings specified in the staff report, the CEQA exemptions, and the conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions.
Does the commission have any questions? Commissioner Overall, please.
Mr. Banks, in, I don't know whether you've seen it or not, but in Mr. Chitillo's letter under impacts to historic resources, he makes a statement, "This project proposes to virtually demolish", and it goes on from there. From your presentation, I didn't get the impression that this is a, you're demolishing it. So I wondered, what am I missing? Or what is being overstated? Or what, maybe you could elaborate a little bit on what that's about?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, the project does not include demolition. However, there would be structural alterations to the structure as part of this addition that would require some pretty extensive construction work. Post-construction, the structure will be exactly as proposed on the plans. So there would be exterior siding that would have to be removed to allow for the additions and then therefore have to meet because of the fact that it's going to have to be altered to meet the fire code requirements for separation since the buildings are so close together. So the proposal is not for demolition. However, there would be considerable construction-related work on the existing structure such that, you know, portions of it would need to be modified, and that is included in the project description in terms of the exterior changes, windows and doors.
Could you pull up one of the plans and perhaps show us where that area is? Obviously, the addition to the front yard is pretty clear, but beyond that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, the, you don't see it here, but the neighbor's residence to the east is essentially, I would estimate, and maybe the architect knows, six inches away, perhaps. As part of the construction, while they're not going to, they're not proposing to completely demolish the structure, pour new footings or new caissons, what have you, keeping the existing structure, these, for sure, this wall would need to be brought up to fire code consistent with its close proximity to the neighbor, so a one-hour fire rating, that sort of thing. So it is likely that that wall, the exterior of that wall, would be completely removed and rebuilt. However, again, the proposal doesn't call for demolition of the existing structure.
Commissioner Eilishen, please.
Yeah, I saw the facility on Saturday. What I wondered, on the, let's see, this would be on the west side, the west side of the project. I wasn't sure of the property line there. As far as that concrete retaining wall, is it on the east or west side of that wall? Do you know?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Eilishen, I'm not exactly sure this dotted line represents the property line. There are some existing improvements in the easement, which is an easement to the entire neighborhood. That includes, you know, stairways and concrete walls, garden walls, that sort of thing. So perhaps the architect might have a little better knowledge of that specific location.
Could you fill in for me, too, a little bit on the zero setbacks that we have in that area? Are there, are the majority of them zero setbacks now? Or are they moving in that direction? What could you tell me?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I would not say the majority. Staff went through the records of the properties along this section of Miramar Beach and identified at that time seven, I believe now would be eight, properties that have formally applied for and received variances. Now, formally applied for and received versus what's existing there, potentially legal nonconforming have existed since, you know, perhaps as early as 1920s. Absolutely, the majority of the houses that are there are built real close to the side yard setbacks, if not up to the property lines.
Nothing. When I was there, I was trying to get a feel for the grade level of the first floor on most of those dwellings. Let's say the two, the two side by side there. And then looking at the grade level of the road above and where the railroad easement is, do you have any data that would help me understand that? Because what I'm seeing, and I was looking in front, and I'm looking down the front of the house, I'm saying, I wonder where the first floor really is. Where's the?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, these few, a couple of properties are unique in the topography in that it does, rather than having the entry come, you know, right off, and a lot of the structures built right up to the driveway, the road. There's actually, you know, an open area patio, or I guess you could call it, where you come, you actually come down and access down below, whereas a lot of the other properties, you're going to have a straight entrance, if not from the second level to the level above. I'm not familiar with all of the topography of all of them, but in this subsection here, we do have that entry that would be farther down from the road.
But as far as I'm seeing down, when I'm standing at the road or down into their patio, and I'm looking down, am I looking into the first floor?
You would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you. The, the view corridor from the beach is important to us. We've, over the years, told a lot of people to get that height down, even, even if you're within the 25 feet or whatever. I haven't, I saw the story poles a little over a year ago. Do you have anything that shows how that sleeping loft will impact the mountain view behind it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I don't have exactly, I do have some photo, photographs that might be representative. So this photograph from the beach showing the existing dwelling and the, the sleeping loft would be here, and again, approximately four feet.
It's only four feet, but maybe someone else will have that. Let me ask you this, is, as far as you know, are there any other historically protected homes down there on Miramar, other than the Coral Casino?
The historic, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner, the historic reports that I reviewed did not include any information on any other historic structures along that stretch of the beach.
Okay, thank you.
Other than, of course, the Miramar area.
Commissioner Brown, please.
Yes, Mr. Banks, good morning. I'd like to ask you, sort of start at the beginning. I spent a lot of time over the weekend looking into the categorical exemption, and I'm wondering why that route was chosen. It seemed to me with the conflicting historic resource reports and the exclusion of his, you know, of historic resources from the categorical exemption, I'm wondering why, why that route was taken.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brown, the project, when it came in initially in, it was January of 2012, as part of the application, or as part of the completeness process, staff requested a historic assessment of the property, which was the San Buena Ventura Report, which is included in the staff report. Upon receiving that report, staff reviewed it, consulted with, internally with senior staff, and based on the conclusions of that initial review, it was somewhat confusing in terms of what the recommendations were. Having said that, staff requested more information be provided because it didn't, the report didn't answer the questions that staff was trying to answer in terms of its significance. Some time went by, several months, the historian provided a more extensive report, what we would call a Phase One/Phase Two report. So, you know, more information, more research was done. In that report too, staff was not clear on what the conclusions were because the conclusions didn't definitively state one way or another. They did, the conclusions of that extended Phase One and Phase Two said that the structure would be historic, potentially historic and eligible for county landmark status. However, the historian applied to mitigation strategies that would lessen the significance, including reuse of materials, which is a fairly common mitigation measure for historic properties, and photo documentation, which is another. However, because staff's, staff was not sure how the report used the county's matrix of criteria and thresholds, and the fact that they weren't, there wasn't a definitive statement, we felt that it best to have a county hired peer review. The county did consult, have Post Hazelteen, a well-known county-qualified consultant, review that historic report. And in, after their review was completed, they recommended several items that the San Buena Ventura historian go back and look at and perhaps clarify. After several months, it was clear that the historian, San Buena Ventura historian, was not prepared to make any changes to the report, and therefore, staff's in a position where we don't have a completed historic analysis. That being the case, the applicant went and hired, went to our county-approved list of consultants and hired Alex Cole, Preservation Planning Associates. Alex did independent review using the research that San Buena Ventura had prepared in her own research, and provided that report to the county, which was pretty conclusive in recommendations and conclusion that the proposed project site and structure was not historic, didn't reach the criteria for historic structure. In an abundance of caution, again, staff sent it to Post Hazelteen as a peer review to confirm that the report was adequate, and Post Hazelteen in June did determine that the project, that they agreed with the conclusions of Alex Cole and how the criteria were applied and that it was not historic. So the 18 months or so that this project has been under review was essentially historic review for that process. The BAR did have three meetings, some, some pretty substantial hearings regarding the architecture, but the vast bulk of this project had been the historic review.
So am I to understand that though, what makes the project, what makes the property not a historic resource are mitigations? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, no. Basically, the conclusion was that the project site is not significant. Therefore, no mitigations were necessary to bring it down to a level of less than significant because it wasn't significant.
I see, so it wasn't the mitigations that made it less than significant. Thank you. The other thing that I would ask, on your, I think it was the elevation slide of the upper, and, because it's the only one I can see, actually. I would, there, the right-of-way is a Union Pacific right-of-way. Did staff consider the safety issue of, as to why that right-of-way is a Union Pacific right-of-way, and what would ever happen if they chose to use their right-of-way privileges?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brown, staff did not do that analysis. The area within the railroad's right-of-way and the agreement amongst the homeowners' association is a, is a private agreement. So the staff's concern with the project was to confirm that the entry would meet the safety requirements of the building code. The proposal that the applicant has in front of us would be the removal of that elevated walkway, and then, what is this essentially exempt work to install stairways, concrete stairways, in this, in this case, within the right-of-way?
And the slide I'm looking for actually is back from this, it's the elevation, that's it, right there. See the dotted line that says Union Pacific? And then see the, where the building's being proposed to come to? Could you push, could you point me right to that exact point? Yes, they're sort of intersect there, don't they?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, indeed, that's the request for the front yard setback. So the requirement for a front yard setback would be 20 feet from the right-of-way. In this case, the right-of-way is the easement, and so the request would be to build right up to the property line, which is, which is here, and which is filled out by that proposed addition.
Thank you very much.
So the proposal is to go from a 20-foot setback to zero setback?
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we will now move to the applicant, if you would like to make a report. Thank you.
We're very glad to finally be here. I'm Thomas Hashbarger, I'm with Design Arc Architects. We were hired about, just almost exactly two years ago by Lori Benson and Kim Benson-Couth, really with one overarching goal in mind, and that is to restore and improve their house. Specifically, as you've seen in some of the photos, and I'll flush that out, to provide a safe and appropriate entry to the house, and to provide a modest kitchen and a sleeping loft that's elevated up off the beach. Now, the challenge there, as we've encountered all along the way, and probably will so this morning, is to do that with respect to the Miramar neighborhood, with respect to the existing charming structure, and all the while being good neighbors along the way. And so what I'll talk about this morning will be really to talk about the architecture, some of which will overlap with Brian, because he did such a good job in sort of giving you a snapshot of that, but also to talk about our processes of how we got here. So before we delve into details, again, I'll be talking with you about sort of the neighborhood, this home and its unique setting, and timeline of the process. So here we are. Again, we've got a photo of the beach, and then I just wanted to include sort of a black and white map of the structures along Miramar Beach. And there on the right, you can see the, the Miramar Hotel. And then the neighbors on Miramar Avenue, we've considered loosely because we, we met with them early on, and there was some concerns voiced about, about view issues. We consider them part of the neighborhood as well. What I've put on this map is just to give you a sense of the scale of how far they are from this project. There's a kind of a 200-foot radius here, which is more or less how far most of those houses are away. I believe when we had our, our neighborhood meetings, and I'll, I'll go through the timeline in a second, that we noticed a 500-foot radius with postcards inviting people to neighborhood So here we are, along Miramar Beach. So clearly, it's, it's unique, and it's very charming, and it's what drew our client to want to live here full-time. I should note that, that, that's their intention, that they live, currently Kim is living in the home, and it's their intention to invest and settle in, in this home full-time. And it could probably be said that not many people down at the beach are full-time owner occupants. As you know, a lot of them are vacation rentals or, or long-term rentals. But clearly, an eclectic mix of homes, and clearly, they're lucky enough, they're very lucky to be situated in, in that special place along Miramar Beach that we all love and enjoy. Now, moving back, that is our proposed project site on the left. Clearly, it's been heavily modified over the years with decks, French doors, seawall, a different beach access stair, and the like. So it's really, if you're going to boil down the, the historic analysis, they really hang their hat on the level of modification disqualifying the house from being a historical resource. That's kind of the bottom line, as I understand it, in historic analysis. And you can see those here. It's not the same house it was. But at the same time, there are some really fantastic details, such as these scrolled corbels, rafter tails, and these heavy timber posts that we love and intend to preserve and keep in place. These will not be torn down, and if they, if they are required to be repositioned for structural reasons, those will be restored or replicated and put back in place. And in fact, if I go back, you can see those here. It's kind of the only way that you can tell that this house is the one we're talking about, by virtue of those corbels there. Now, moving back around, this is just rehashing a little bit, but just to move you back around to the driveway, that is the walkway that one must traverse to enter the, enter the house. And as a, as a point of correction, Brian, the, the driveway, what you're looking down on is actually the upper level. So there's an entire, there's an entire level below this. So when, when Brian, you were saying that, that you're looking down on the, on the first floor, you're actually looking down on the second floor, is that significant a drop-off? So, back to our timeline, we kind of, we designed in the fall of 2011, meeting with our client, figuring, refining what could fit, looking back into county ordinance and whatnot, came up with the plan that we thought was, was appropriate. The first thing we did was, we, we met with the, the adjacent neighbors, the bores. And then we followed up by inviting all the neighbors to get together at the house to, to go over the design and make sure everyone understood it before we went to our first, first Montecito Board of Architecture Review. Just prior to that, we met with the HOA to get them up to speed as well. Then following that first Board of Architecture Review, where we, we had a lot of feedback, you can see there were a lot of letters, there was a lot of concern about the height of the project at that point. We went back and the, I'll explain further, you know, what actually happened in drawing and plan and section on these days, but just to give you a timeline. Then we, we put story poles up that reflected the redesign, and then we met with the neighbors the next day and invited them again to go over it and, and get the response. And we followed up with a second BAR meeting. BAR was very happy at that point that we had reduced the project and made it lower and, and responded to the neighbors as such. Then the third BAR meeting was really more, what we felt was, were minor refinements to kind of hit a home run, because we really wanted to have positive comments go into the staff report. Then really, since then, as Brian noted, was to complete the CDP application, historic analysis and whatnot. And then I should say, in the last two months, we've re-engaged with the bores and, and have gone back and forth with them in terms of trying to address their concerns structurally, more on a technical level, the foundation systems, the firewall, and all that. And I can talk about some of those in our building sections. So back, back to our goal number one, and that is to provide the safe entrance to the house, as well as restore the original front door location, and that is hiding behind these bushes, right about there, down on that first floor. And we want, we want to put it back to where it belongs, down in that location. So again, the, the entry sequence across this walkway. The other concern about this is that visitors come and think this is beach access, much to the dismay of Kim who lives there. This is not a beach access, even though it's very inviting, but that is, that is a private walkway that leads down onto a private deck that does not have beach access. Nonetheless, one traverses the roof and descends stairs and doubles back onto a beach-facing deck to get into the house. This is, this is awkward and unsafe, and the, the project that we're putting forward remedies that. Now, to spin through the floor plans, I'm sorry about the reorientation, but we wanted to position these in alignment with the building sections that will follow. So in, in my case, the beach is on the right, we've got beach access stairs, we've got our deck, and that existing lower floor plan with the adjacent residences there. Currently, this is just subterranean crawl space, and then you can again see the somewhat irregular property lines. Now, the, the proposal is essentially, one thing I should explain on this plan is, you can see the, the proposed addition, this is 132 square feet, extremely modest, sort of bare-bones program to try to, try to improve this house up to what could be functional year-round for someone. That this kitchen is a half-level up from the living space, so it's really a split-level scheme, and you'll see that more in the building sections that will follow. Here we can see the existing upper level, again, deck, living space, existing masonry, unreinforced masonry fireplace that we proposed to remove to save space and also afford more flexibility on the interior. And also, it's, it's somewhat of a hazard in, in the fact that it's, it's unreinforced as well, that's also a concern. And then again, here's the, here's the, the historic entry point to the house that has, it's, it's still there, and it's boarded up, but it's been covered over by a little efficiency kitchen that was built years ago. And then again, here's the walkway that comes across. So again, here's the, here's the, the beach on your right, another deck that stacks on top, we'll be filling in that. We'll be filling in that, that access stair that goes down from above, because it will no longer be necessary. Here's the, the front door location, a sleeping loft within this larger volume, a half a level up. And then this, this entry comes in across through an easement granted years and years ago by this adjacent neighbor. And again, what Brian was saying is to reconfigure that wood walkway with another stair. The existing roof plan, fireplace that will be removed, this walkway will be absorbed into the house essentially. And here's the, here's the proposed roof plan. And this, this is, and we'll see in section and also in the renderings to follow, as a result of our last MBAR meeting, was the part of the beach-facing elevation that we thought, gosh, that, that's really valuable, and that's really the only piece left standing that hasn't been modified over the years. Let's keep that, and let's push the whole volume of the house back to not only respect that, but also to kind of break down the, you know, the bulk, if you will, even though this is a very modest project, of that elevation. The ridge is still the same direction, the gable is still oriented the same, we're just elevating it, you know, slightly over three and a, three and a half feet high above the Now, it's really the building sections that kind of tell, tell the whole story in terms of the evolution from our first BAR meeting to where we are now. So again, here we are with the beach, those two decks that will remain. Originally, we had proposed this bedroom to be located with a small walkout deck on top of that upper floor with the kitchen tucked underneath. And we heard loud and clear at BAR from, from neighbors, many of whom are here and who have probably written in today, that that was too much. So we, we took that, and he did that feedback and went back for a second time to BAR vastly reducing the size of the house. So that floor was taken off, gave up on the idea of a walkout deck, gave up on the idea of a, of an enclosed bedroom, and got creative and said, hey, we can, we can still fit a little loft in this space that has a view afforded through the, through this gable and the main living room. We'll tuck the kitchen down, this half-level, down off that living area, and just get it down, get it to be lower, and really squeeze this thing. So the difference between these two is essentially right here, let's go back, just a minor refinement between this April BAR and the May BAR was really refining and sculpting that front to everyone's satisfaction. And it might just, it might just rattle off the seven comments that BAR made at that meeting, which are, they like the design which pulls the clear story back from the front elevation. It presents a much different look, which is now acceptable. Second comment, the eclectic nature of the community along Miramar Beach allows for this charming building. Number three, they like the way the horizontal eve works with the neighboring homes. Number four, they're comfortable with the height, bulk, and scale of the project. Number five, they appreciate the owners, that the owners listened to MBAR and the neighbors. Number six, the north elevation is tailored down as far as possible and is now acceptable. Number seven was a little bit more in technical terms, consider minimizing the height through construction techniques and shortening the roof overhang. So those were the, those were the positive comments we were left with from BAR.
What was the date on that MBAR?
That was May 21st of 2012. So, so one other issue that came up during BAR was, and I believe you have a letter from the Hogans to that effect, was a concern of their private view across the railroad easement that could possibly be impacted by this addition. And what this, what this site section tells us is that there is no impact in that regard, and that this easement is in fact lower than these railroad right-of-way vine-covered fences. And on top of that, it's lower than all of the neighboring fences that are currently there in place. And you'll see that in my story poll photos that I'll show later. So just backing up a second, this was the, the original design with the, the second floor, that was modified, and how it looked from the beach, and how it looked from the western part of the beach. Here's the walkout deck that we saw in section. Now here's the, the existing beach elevation, that is the before condition when we went to BAR for the second time. You can see my little tags up here, BAR number two. So there we are with the, with the gable pulling all the way out. Now this, this elevation is what's reflected in the story polls, so they're not entirely reflecting the final design. That story poll that, that comes up there as a gable form is actually about four feet back from there, because we wanted to maintain this eve line through here. So now here we are at the third BAR meeting with that gable pushed back and kind of sculpting that north elevation, and that was at the direction of BAR. And in retrospect, we love it because it allows us to really keep all of that.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, for interrupting you. Could you just go back one slide? What is that I'm, is that someone's chimney I'm looking at?
This here?
Yes.
That's the proposed masonry fireplace that would be removed, on, as a part of this project. It's just, it's a masonry fireplace, yeah.
That's proposed? That's not there now?
That is there now.
It is there now.
Yeah, it's proposed to be removed.
Proposed to be removed. And then can you go ahead one slide?
Yes.
It looks like you're in the mountains to me, man. Go back again. Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Now again, from the vantage point of the beach, that final elevation in regards to the design. Again, just to go through the elevations, I won't reiterate what Brian said, but this would be considered the, the existing roof line, and here's our projection above. But maybe even more importantly, here is the line of the existing driveway at Miramar Beach Drive, and this is sort of the proposed house above that particular elevation. It looks like it's underwater here a little bit on our drawing, but that's only because we wanted to communicate that it's, you know, predominantly below the level of the driveway. This would be the location of that entrance door that we're squeezing in between the two structures and putting that back where it was originally. Again, showing the clear story windows along the, along the side on the west elevation. This affords natural light coming down into that space, which is really a rare commodity along Miramar Beach. A lot of the houses that are wall-to-wall really have a hard time getting natural light in. Again, that exterior elevation facing the beach to the south. So our story polls look like this. As I've said before, this one pulls back toward that, toward that fireplace about four feet, and this would be the mass of that, that, that sleeping loft and kitchen beyond. So again, as you can see, an extremely modest-sized project. And again, they're showing the story polls from the driveway, even from eye level from that driveway, you can, you can see a broad expanse of, of the ocean and islands beyond. So it's easy to surmise that 200 feet away up on an elevated deck that this house would have no impact on those private views. And this further reinforces the case here in terms of this railroad easement fence, the massive landscaping beyond, and the, the neighboring fences that were also below. And this looks like sort of a non, a non-story poll photo, but it is a story poll photo taken from slightly to the west along Miramar Beach Drive, only to communicate that they can't be seen from this vantage point, because these fences are all higher than, than the proposed project. So here we are with a winter day that has scoured a lot of the sand away with our, with our story polls up. And you can see, there's a, there's a series of other gables, and we believe that this project not only does not detract from the charm and character of Miramar Beach, that it actually plays into that interplay of all the different roof forms along there, actually add character and improve this house as it relates to Miramar Beach, and especially the structure itself in terms of its livability. Just to back up for one second before I wrap up, we're here for the, for, as Brian said, for the CEQA exemption, the variance approval that this property will enjoy, and the coastal So just, just to wrap up, let me just say that throughout the design process, we've made every effort to meet with members of the community, the homeowners association, neighbors, a structural engineer who's present here today to address stability concerns in terms of how can we build this place without tearing it down. I've met with Kason Rigging Company, two contractors on two separate occasions to really, hey, how can, how can we pull this thing off and shore up and build this addition and leave that house intact? So a lot of effort has gone into that, even though we don't have structural drawings yet. But really, the goal is to maintain, maintain the charm of Miramar Beach, listen and respond to the neighbors, and really have the utmost respect for the place. Thank you.
There may be some questions. Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you. I want to talk about the historic aspect, just to get this out of the way. This, this, this house has more birthdays, alleged birthdays, than my great aunt did. Are we sure this is, what's your view of, what's the owner's view of the age of this property? And aren't there records that evidence that? Well, what do you think, what do you think the age is?
You know, I tend to defer to Alex Cole's report. And you're right, well, there were actually two, and those were, those were based on the Sanborn maps. And the way that Alex Cole put it, I believe it, it was the later date, the 1942 date. But the, the title situation down here in that era was, was pretty loose. And so that really made it tough for these researchers to figure out the exact date, because they couldn't really pin it to a title. So, so they spent a lot of time sort of trying to get to the bottom of it, and I would sort of defer to what's in the accepted historical report in terms of birthday.
Okay. The, so it's everyone's sense that this is at least 50 years old, which
Absolutely. Yeah, it's clear.
The integrity of the building is an issue in the determination of historic significance. The, there's been an allegation that this is the best example of these homes, the original building of these homes. I can sense that you're sensitive to this issue, and, but do you agree with that? Is there enough integrity in this building to call it a great example, an example to be preserved? Do you think it is?
You know, I can't, I can't, I can't really agree with that because, because of the modifications that have been made. And it was one sort of area of struggle with the original historian is that, that was a value statement that he made that wasn't really backed up by anything. As everyone probably knows, there's the, it's just off-camera here, a couple other structures on the west end that are, are really similar and probably more intact. So I questioned that statement by, by that original historian immediately, because I completely disagreed with it. I don't think it's, it's the best example that's there, and it was, it was a fine example years ago, as they all were, but, but the, most of the houses have either been torn down or replaced, or so heavily modified that you can't really recognize them anymore.
So you believe there's another building or home, at least one, that is a better example, less manipulated and provides a better example?
In my mind, Mark, that's
You don't need to point it out, I just, I know you've looked at this.
Well, the one that comes to mind is the one down at the west end called La Hondo, that, that doesn't have the decks added to it, that still clearly looks old-school and like they haven't really updated the windows and doors, and that, that would be my pick in terms of, if one down there, that's, that's more original.
The, and I just brought this up before, I just want to get back to it. The, the northern view from the beach, that view corridor is a public view corridor and is important to this commission. Did MBAR look at that? Did they just?
Live? Yeah, we met, we met almost the entire board down there with story polls in place and looked at that. And it's, between the mass of landscaping that's there, obviously eucalyptus trees, palm trees and whatnot, we did, we paced up and down a couple times, and that was on everyone's mind in terms of that view corridor. And it didn't get a lot of weight for a couple reasons. One, you can't get far enough away from the house by virtue of the ocean, I mean, this is a great example, I wish, you know, it was high tide all the time. But we couldn't get far enough away to see a good glimpse of the mountains that the story polls would obstruct. A lot of it was already taken up now by that existing bulky fireplace, so there were just tiny shreds of daylight that they could see, and they felt, they felt okay about it.
Okay.
In terms of impact.
Thank you.
Ms. Black, please.
Thank you very much for coming and giving us your presentation. You mentioned that the historic entrance for, was now not in use, is that because of that small kitchen?
Yeah, that's right.
And so if that small kitchen were removed, you could go back to using that historic entrance, is that correct?
We could, it's, it's of a size that isn't really functional anymore, it's only about six feet tall, because they nipped it to build that, that deck that goes over. So yes and no. We couldn't remove the kitchen, crack that door open, and use it without a little bit of work.
But, but that is, it sounds like that might be a possibility. On the mountain views, I, you know, this is a very sensitive corridor in here and very important to the community of Montecito. I certainly have been down there myself in low tide, when you can walk the tide pools and you get a very spectacular mountain view. So I think it sort of changes on a daily basis. I've also been down there on days like that, when you can't get, you know, you're so close to the houses, you can't see much of anything.
Exactly.
But certainly in one of the photographs that you put in for evidence, it showed the mountain view from the beach, so I think that's important to keep in mind. And I, you have a photo in there that you started off, it was a rather historic photo, do you have a date on that?
Forty, forty-six.
Oh, that's 1946, thank you very much. Thank you very much, that takes care of my questions.
Commissioner Overall, please.
You noted, from the history standpoint, you noted that there was extensive amount of modification done from the original building. Do you have a date for any of that modification?
You know, we really don't. There was a lot of work done in the 70s, but we have not been able to find permits for that walkway or, or those decks. There's been some permits to structurally retrofit them, but no permits that I could find in the county record, the microfilm or otherwise that dates those.
Okay.
Commissioner Idelson, please.
Can you pull up a picture showing the boundary between this project and the house to the west, and give me somewhat of an idea, well, actually, give me a pretty close idea where that property line's going to be, because you're going to move into that space.
Yeah, we're not proposing to move the property line.
No, not the property line, I mean, you're moving the structure, or you're building into
Yeah, there's already structure there, it's just, it's the one you're walking on top to get to the houses. Down, down below, there's already structure against that property line, what it looks like on that site plan. The way back here. So the, the lower level, here we are, were built up to the property line.
So you have a complete floor under that walk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I have a question, I guess for staff. In considering these, the issues before us and this project, do we consider historical significance as applying only to the property before us, or does it apply to the community, to the neighborhood? How does that work?
Madam Chair, when one reviews the significance criteria for a given project, they do take the the setting into account. In this case, and most of the cases, I'm sure your commission sees, it's for individual projects. So we look at that individual project and the potential for change in that setting, that area. And I think in this area, it was the Miramar Beach, you know, neighborhood, as we've kind of loosely defined it along the road.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Here, Mr. Brown, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That triggered another question. And either to the applicant or to the staff, does, is, wouldn't it be true that in the three historic reports, that the local body only needs one criteria? And did not all three reports identify at least one eligibility criteria?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brown, the initial report did designate the one area would be the county, as potential to be listed as a county, but the subsequent report and peer review did not indicate that. Because they indicated essentially that there wasn't, the project didn't reach a significance threshold. So there weren't any.
I guess what I'm asking is, what are the regulations for, for example, our own Historic Landmark Commission? Would they, would they not only need one eligibility criteria to landmark?
One would, Madam Chair, Commissioner. However, again, when staff reviewed the report, it wasn't clear how the historian applied our metric, our criteria, matrix and criteria, to come up with a score. So when one evaluates historic, for historic potential, the historians would go through these different categories, you know, setting, as has been discussed, a well-known architect or landscape architect, someone of importance or perhaps infamous that lived there, wrote the great, you know, novel, those sort of criteria, beyond just the structure itself and the materials and the date of construction. So when one looks at historic significance, you capture all of those. And it need not reach a level high in all of them. It could only be extremely high in one. You know, a very famous author lived there and wrote the great, you know, book, novel. In this case, based on the extensive amount of review and peer review in the project, it wasn't clear that it met any of those. And therefore, was determined not to reach the significance threshold, which allowed staff to use the CEQA exemption, categorical exemption, rather than a higher level of environmental review.
I'm looking at page 13 on it. I'm not sure what, who's reported is. It must be the Hazelton. And it says integrity of location, the building remains in its original location, thereby it retains integrity of location. So that would be one aspect. I mean, could not H lack our local historic, page 13 of, I think it's Hazelton.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think what you're looking at is the Alex Cole's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I am. Thank you very much. So there's two, there's two reports that refer to at least one criteria of eligibility for our local commission. And again, that concerns me on the, you know, the exemption.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I see that. And I guess what staff would say, well, I'm not a historian, is the integrity aspect, whereas perhaps the commission's familiar with cottages, moody cottages that get moved and relocated, and the integrity criteria that would apply to that, and how important that is. In this case, there's no question that the building's there, and it's, it's been there, and it hasn't been moved. So that is one of the scores that the project ranked in the two are good, because it has retained its location and hasn't been moved. However, when you, again, when you review projects, you, you use all of the criteria. We can't, we can't review them without providing this kind of scoring to evaluate the total score of the project within each of those categories.
And while I understand, for planning purposes, historic resources are looked at slightly differently or graded slightly differently, but was there any consideration of taking this to the Historic Landmark Commission and seeking their opinion? I mean, maybe we would, are we, why are we having this difficulty? I mean, we have a commission that might be able to address this for us.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, staff did not recommend, again, it was only until June, more than a year of historic review, where staff was ever able to determine that there was or there was not any significance, because we've been in that review process for that amount of time. And once the Cole report was prepared and peer reviewed and determined that it wasn't significant, again, there wasn't question in staff's mind that it was or it wasn't because of the conclusions that were reached and how the Cole report used the thresholds in the county's matrix as staff was expecting to see in the initial report. So there wasn't a question if it was or it wasn't, once the reports were prepared in the, in the manner that our thresholds require.
Any further questions from the commission? If not, thank you.
Thank you. And if, Madam Chair, if we could get a few minutes to address some of these concerns and a couple others after public comment, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We will now move to, I think it's a good time to ask the commissioners to make disclosures in regard to site visits and ex-party communications. Ms. Brown, Commissioner Brown, please.
I did make a site visit with the Bores, who are the adjacent neighbors. And I spoke to Mr. Boar, and I spoke to Callum De Forest, and I spoke to Mr. Chitillo. And I think, and I did visit the site, so thank you.
Commissioner Phillips, please.
I visited the site.
Commissioner Idelson, please.
I visited the site and spoke to Mr. Boar.
Commissioner Overall, please.
I visited the site twice, and I met with Mr. Boar. And if there's anything that I heard that doesn't come out in this discussion, I'll be sure and mention it.
Absolutely. And I visited the site, met with Mr. Boar. And if anything comes out that I had prevy to, I will certainly disclose that. But as of now, there's no disclosure on that. We will now move to, again, if you would like to speak to this issue, and I don't have your speaker slip, please fill out one. We'll now move to Mr. Chitillo.
Madam Chair, I wondered if we could have Mr. and then Mrs. Boar speak first, and then I would follow up at the end of that.
Absolutely. That's not the way it came to me.
Madam Chair, I think they, I dropped the paperclip, and I think I put them back in any order, so
Absolutely.
I apologize. I didn't realize they were in a sequence. Thank you.
We try to be fair here. Mr. Boar, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jürgen Boar. And first of all, I would like to make a response to Mr. Overall's comments. We really apologize, apologize for the late, last-minute deluge of submissions, but we were strung along in negotiations until last Friday. Otherwise, that would not have happened. So my comments, we attended three M-Bar meetings last year voicing our objections about the size, bulk scale, and neighborhood compatibility of this project. When I also tried to express our concerns about the effect the proposed project would have on our building, which is separated only by inches from the applicant's building, they said that was not something MBAR deals with, but you, the Montecito Planning Commission, does. Granting or refusing variances which impact neighbors is your prerogative. Nobody wants to deny an owner the right to improve or remodel property, but it should not be at the detriment of neighbors. That's, that's what the zero setback variances would do to us. If you look along Miramar Beach, many setback variances have been granted, even for the big buildings at the east side of the beach. But the great majority have some small space between, so that maintenance and repairs can be done. Our two buildings have set inches apart like this for at least 80 years. We are extremely worried about what would happen to our building when and if construction starts. We want to be cooperative neighbors and have tried to negotiate with the applicant about mitigating the impacts to our building. No success. Negotiations were broken off last Friday. In order to do construction, that would need, they would need to use part of our property. We want assurances about plans for that area, as well as the entry area surrounding their, their project and their property lines. If zero setbacks are allowed, again, we tried to negotiate, no success. Our interests need to be protected, and we are looking for, to you to protect them. The variances they asked for should be denied or at least reduced. I also want to make a few short comments about the historical significance of the applicant's property. When we saw the first historical report, we thought, well, the possible Santa Barbara County landmark designation must mean something. I guess for the applicant, it meant an inconvenience, because within several months, they had another report that negated the previous finding of significance and gave around 1940 as a date for their building, instead of around 1910 in the previous report. It took me only a couple of hours of research at the Montecito History Archives to find pictures that totally debunked that finding, and I submitted those pictures to you. This flaw in the historical treatment needs to be dealt with. This property is part of an original historic design of mirror twin, almost 100-year-old bathhouses. Please direct staff to prepare a mitigated negative declaration and send the project to the Historic Landmark Advisory Commission to consider its eligibility for county landmark designation. Once again, please do not allow all-around zero setback variances, and look hard at the flawed historical reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Villalobos, are we allowing, is that monitor set for two minutes? No, I just wasn't sure where we had it set. Are we setting at three? Okay, that's fine. Ms. Pam Boar, questions?
Could I ask Mr. Boar a question?
Absolutely. Mr. Boar, we have a question, please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Mr. Boar, you submitted some photographs to us. Did you have any authenticity on the dating of those?
There are, the 1936 picture is dated on the picture. I got that from the Montecito Archives. The night, there's a picture that says summer 1927, 1928, that is on the picture. And the other, well, there are no dates on the other pictures. What I did was more or less go from backwards from date, showing that certain buildings retrospectively did not exist before that, or before that, or before that. So that's how I got back to around 1920 was, would be the earliest picture in that section, I would assume.
And in this 1936 picture, are you identifying the applicant's property as TC? Is that correct?
Yeah, as twin cottages, because, you know, they were built as twin cottages. You can see it by the two, you mentioned that fireplace chimney, the same fireplace chimney is on the, on the property next door at 1542.
And, and these, these photographs came from the Montecito History Archives?
Three of them came from the Montecito History Archives, from the, what is that collection called?
It says Miramar Square Book.
The Dalton, the Miramar Square Book and the Dalton Collection. They have that on their computer. And the last one is from JW Cullen Collection, which is online. And I guess Michael Schmidt in Summerland is more or less the curator of that collection. I asked him whether any of his pictures are dated, but they're not. And I more or less, that last picture, I dated around 1920, because buildings that existed a little later are not there yet on that, on that picture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Overall, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Boar, please.
Mr. Boar? I wonder if you could shed any light on the date or dates in which those cottages were remodeled? It appears from the photographs that we've seen that neither of them look the way they did back when. Do you have any, can you shed any light on when those changes took place?
As far as, as I have been, we got married in 1971, and I moved to Santa Barbara at that point, 1971. As far as I can remember, most of the cottages remain the same. There was, in 19, what was it, 82 or something like this, there was a big winter storm that damaged the front sites of some of these cottages, at which point, some of the frontages were rebuilt. And I don't know, not sure how far these rebuildings were done, whether they went through the county as repairs or needed permission or permits, I do not know. But before that, you know, one of the letters that you have is from Edith Tippel. They lived in that cottage, what, I guess, in the 1960s. And, you know, I remember the cottage, 1542B, looking very much like it is right now in 19, in the, when I got there, 1971.
So it already had the deck on it, decks on it at that point in time?
At that point of time, they had the decks on it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or Mr. Boar?
Sorry.
I think, I think we have finished with our questions for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pamela Boar, please.
Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Pamela Boar. Contrary to what you see, I was not there when our cottage at 1544 Miramar Beach was built. But I was there 67 years ago, in 1946, when a third generation Montecito resident and her husband, my parents, bought our cottage. We and our pets lived happily there during at least four stretches of time. And I sat on the steps in the photo that you have of me over 60 years ago, and those steps are identical to how they looked back then. We lived there harmoniously, without causing any misery to our neighbors. Our many family gatherings were legendary. James Dean appeared at one party, and Ray Bolger was at another one nearby. Throughout the years, we have lived in peace and harmony with our neighbors. When Mr. Grodenhouse totally rebuilt 1546 next door, we had no objections at all, because he stayed within the previous footprint. There have been other remodels in the immediate neighborhood that we have supported, which have turned out very nicely, such as 1548. And those people actually use a Murphy bed as a space saver. This project, however, is way too large for its site. It's not only incompatible with the immediate neighborhood of cottages and artists, that artists like Hank Pitcher and Ruth Ellen Hoag have loved to portray, but it would also dwarf over us and adjacent houses. The north extension would rob us of space, light, and air. The proposed expansion enlarges the house over 25 percent. It blocks views and affects the scenic value of the neighborhood. In light of three generations of my family being good shepherds of our property for 67 years, it would be a tragedy if this project were to gain approval. By giving in to the applicant's variance demands, the county will nullify the zoning protections we thought we had. I ask you to deny this project and tell the applicant to scale it back. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Boar? If not, thank you very much. We will now move to Mr. Chitillo. And Todd Boar has asked at his time be given to Mr. Chitillo, and the chair will rule that, that that's fine. So maximum of six minutes, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Mark Chitillo, and I'm here on behalf of the Boar family. And I want to thank you for accepting the late submittals into the record, and for looking so carefully at this over the weekend. It is short notice, and we really appreciate your attention and digging into the matter. We wish We wish we weren't here under these circumstances, but here we are. The Bores, as you've heard, are a multi-generational family, multi-generational owners of this parcel, and they have considerable concerns about the scale of the proposed project. It's our view that this house, the houses in that end of the Miramar Cove area, Miramar Beach are the last vestiges of this historic community and those historic structures. And as Ms. Bore indicated, prior remodels that stayed in the same footprint were not challenged or controversial in the neighborhood. But this project is a major expansion, and it is that expansion of the footprint. It is that increase in the height. It is that new development which is going all the way to the very property line with zero setbacks, which affects views and is in essence a rebuild of a historical structure. Those are all components which go far beyond what others have done in this particular stretch of the beach, and we, we have those concerns. Addressing the question, Mr. Commissioner Oberoi, with respect to the project description, I called it a virtual demolition, and if it's possible, staff, if you could put up the section drawing. Staff mentioned that there were not going to be caissons as part of the project, and I think that may have been a misstatement. This project does involve removing the roof. It involves removing the walls on either side because there's no setback there. It involves removing the chimney, which is a very sizable chunk of the, the side of the property. And it involves drilling caissons down through the existing floors in order to provide additional infrastructure, as well as pouring stem walls and concrete foundations under the house and putting in grade beams. So we don't know, I think at this point, we've tried to find out how much of a development is involved here. Is this going to be like a tear down? And we don't know. And in fact, until the, it may not be until the construction happens that we really know the size and magnitude of the development. And that's why we think it's important that we need to review this now. The historical resources on site have, I think, suffered the death of a thousand cuts. And we don't think that it's appropriate that additional insults to the historical integrity of this structure be approved without fully understanding what is the historical significance of this property. It's too big, and in our view, it is too impactful. So I would like to turn your attention now to a two-page document that I submitted with respect to the required findings and the facts that are in the record to kind of guide you in our thinking about how the critical findings that your commission has to make to approve this project really cannot and should not be made, and, and how that gives you then the direction. This is a two-pager that is on my letterhead.
Okay.
Front and back. And the top is required findings and facts in the record. And, and these are the findings that guide your commission, and the required finding for-
Could you give us just a minute?
Oh, sure.
We have a lot of paper here. We want to have it before us. Thank you.
It's loose.
I know, yeah. It's loose. It's submitted this morning.
Looks like this.
Okay. Dan, you see what it looks like? Okay, it's this. It's the required findings.
Yes, required findings and facts in the record, that's the one.
I think we have that now. Please proceed.
Great, thank you so much. The, the first required finding is for the variance, and the underlying text indicates that the variance can, is only appropriate when you find that the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity. So the key question there in whether you should give a zero setback variance is what are the privileges that are enjoyed by others? And in the record, the findings themselves, first of all, the applicant does not have a variance for portions of the existing house. The applicant wants additional variances to allow expansion of the new development into, out to the property line, the zero setback. And most significantly, most Miramar Beach houses have side setbacks of only a few feet. Well, we've heard there's only six inches here. So what we believe is that even a few feet might be appropriate in terms of a setback, and staff has taken you, in terms of a side setback, staff has taken you all the way to approving a zero line setback. That's not a privilege that others enjoy. And so I think based on that first component, while we would not quarrel or object to a variance for the existing structures, that's fair. But should they get a new variance to allow that north end of the building to come all the way to the property line, that's not a privilege that's enjoyed by others in this area. And so we, we think that you are not able to make that first finding. The second finding, 2.2, is similar in that the variance should not constitute a grant of special privileges which are inconsistent with the limitation on other properties in the vicinity. Well, the special privileges do exist here. The records show that of the 28 homes in the area, only seven of them have previous front setback variances that have been granted. Well, almost all of them do have variances to allow reduced side setbacks, or they're non-conforming, but most have side setbacks of a few feet. And here they're asking for a zero setback, and so that's a special privilege that we view. And then thirdly, the required finding for the variance and the CDP is that it won't conflict with the general plan. And there is a general plan policy that Ms. Post pulled, identified as being most relevant for the historical components, that it shall preserve and protect properties and structures with historic importance to the Monosito community to the maximum extent feasible. And Madam Chair, if I could have just one minute to flip over to the back and to-
Yes, please.
To discuss quickly the, the SEQA issues. In addition to those findings, it's our view that the categorical exemption is not permissible because there are unusual circumstances. And these are the historic values of the property, and the historic reports show that there's a paucity of data. And the documentation, documentation doesn't provide sufficient data to be able to determine if it is significant or not. And if it is historically significant, this categorical exemption is not available. Similarly, the historical, I'm sorry, the visual resources and the view both from the beach and from the roadway looking out over this structure, as well as from the, the homes on the other side of the railroad tracks. Those are unusual circumstances which prevent the use of a categorical exemption. And then thirdly, these, the incompatibility with land use is identified under SEQA as a potentially significant impact. And here, the project is not consistent with the zoning ordinance, which requires these setbacks. So the categorical exemption cannot be used, and we think that the negative declaration is supported by evidence before you. So our bottom line, we think that it's okay to grant the variances for the existing buildings, but we oppose new variances for new development which allow building all the way to the property line where that does not exist now. We believe the structure is historically significant, so the categorical exemption cannot be used, and, and the impact needs to be analyzed. And, and through that process, we think that we'll be able to both answer these historical as well as the other impact areas to views and the land use. So we appreciate your indulgence to allow me to complete my remarks and your careful consideration of this important matter.
I think we have some questions. Commissioner Brown, please.
Mr. Chitillo, could you please explain? I heard you just say it, and I just need to get it one more time in my mind, that a categorical exemption cannot be used for a historic resource. Could you, I'm sorry, I know you just said it, but it just, there was a lot of information there, and I lost it.
I, I had to compress.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for the question. A categorically, a categorical exemption is the most abbreviated form of SEQA compliance. It involves no review of impacts at all. It, it is a conclusion, a conclusion which you're required to accept, conclusion by staff, which you either accept or reject, that the project is such that there is no possibility of a significant environmental impact. And there's an exception to using a categorical exemption under the SEQA guidelines when a project is located in an unusually sensitive area, such as having historical features around it, or visual resources, or in other cases biological, not here. But we have the unusual circumstances and a sensitive location such that if there's evidence of a potentially significant impact, the categorical exemption should not be used. You must go up the next, the next level of SEQA review, which involves preparing an initial study, and then typically a negative declaration in order to address those impacts. And here, because we think, well, there is evidence in the record from the first historical report that this is a, that this structure has historical significance. Now, we can't, you can't unring the bell there and, and refute that evidence with a subsequent report. It may, it may reduce the significance of that evidence, or it may impugn it a little bit, but it's still significant, or it is still substantial evidence in the record that it's historically significant. And if it's historically significant, then an impact to it is a potentially significant impact, and so you can't use the categorical exemption.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
I have a question in regard to the, what seems like conflicting historical reports. Is it your position that those should be weighted against each other? How, how do we judge those?
Well, I'm very troubled by that. The sequence and how that process worked out, and indeed, just today was, I heard that there was a second peer review by Post Hazelton in June of 2013 that doesn't appear in the materials before us. It's confusing, and it's, it's conflicting. I don't think that they are, they weigh against each other, and particularly in this SEQA context. If there's evidence of a significant impact, SEQA directs your commission and the county to just look at one side of that evidence. And if there's a potentially significant impact, you have to elevate it to that negative declaration stage. You can't quash that evidence by introducing conflicting evidence. SEQA is quite clear about that. And in the context of this categorical exemption, these troubling historical issues are kind of getting swept under the rug. And so that's, it's our firm belief that when you have this kind of conflicting testimony, which includes substantial evidence, that it is a significant impact. The fact that there's other evidence that says, oh, maybe it's not, you're not allowed to weigh that evidence and say, no, we're going to conclude that there's nothing significant there. SEQA says, in questions of doubt, you have to err on the side of additional environmental review. And that's the problem that I see with this conflicting historical data, is we don't know what the real story is, and that's why we need to take this to the negative declaration level, to sort that out and to have a, a notice and comment period so that we could have the ability to review all of the evidence that's out there and offer our comments and maybe have a historian that we think is, is authoritative on this to offer their comments and try and really get to the bottom line. Because the reality is, we don't know, is this historic, what's the age of construction? That's one key issue. And secondly, have this, have all these other changes, all of which are without permits, as far as I can tell, that whether those illegal changes to the property have diminished its, its historical value. And if they did, if, if I'm correct in thinking that those were non-permitted changes, then SEQA would also say you should look at the cumulative effect of the changes of this project plus those other changes which didn't have the benefit of permits, to see if that has cumulatively caused a loss of a historical resource. And that's what I'm hearing from here, is that the, the architect spoke and said he believes that the key issue is the integrity, and that the integrity of the structure has been lost as a result of prior changes. So again, we need to get to the bottom of that, and we don't have it in front of us, and that's why we need additional review.
Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chitillo, when you say under SEQA, negative impact, negative impact on, on what? Is it the environment, the, the bigger environment, or is it a negative impact on this building and that you're supposing it's arguably historic? Is it, which one are you talking about?
Well, so SEQA looks at a potentially significant impact.
On?
And it's, it looks at a physical impact. So it can be a physical impact to the surrounding area-
Well-
-from the changes of this project. You can have a physical impact on the surrounding area from the increased profile of the house. You lose views. The historical is a little tricky because you have basically a, an historical resource in the series of houses. As I view it, the half dozen houses surrounding this one on either side are kind of the old style ones that have some, some integrity left in them. There's also a number that have been eliminated.
But that's unfair. That's a defined term. It isn't a historical resource yet. It's potentially, simply because it's 50 and we're not, and it doesn't make it more historical because it's 70, by the way. 50 is the trigger, and then there's other work to do. Agreed?
Agreed.
All right. So again, where, where is the impact, and who is it upon?
Well, and I'm offering my opinion-
Go ahead.
That there's the, that six or so home section there is historically significant. And that's the resource. There is a community benefit, a community value to these historical structures, because when we walk that beach, you can look at it and go, think back to the 20s when they were beach houses here. And so the resource is this, this historical integrity of that area, and that's what's impacted by the proposed project. Now, I'm not, it's my opinion that it's there. I think we have conflicting evidence as to whether it is, but I got one, at least, at least one expert who says that they believe that it, that this structure is historically significant.
I don't, can you point to that report that says that?
Yeah, it's the very first report. It's from the San Bueno Ventura Research Associates.
I thought their conclusion was murkier than that.
Well, and county staff did as well. And, and that's what kind of led us down the path. And again, the two, I mean, as, as you heard described, the, the, I think all of the studies say that it doesn't qualify as a landmark, state or federal, but it appears to qualify under San Bueno Ventura's conclusion, their opinion, as, under the local criteria, the local historic landmarks ordinance criteria, that it may fit there. And so, and that's, and that's then where Alex Cole and Post Hazelton looked at it and applied their own subjective criteria to the valuation of the property as to whether it could or could not qualify. Our view is, let's let H-LAC look at it. I mean, they're the experts for that, that ordinance.
Why, why aren't you arguing more strongly that that view corridor has been compromised?
I only have three minutes.
Oh, come on.
And I only had a day to prepare my comments. I, I think, I actually have it on my, my notes here, but I do think that a visual-
I'm not saying it is, but it-
Well-
You just said it was.
The, I, I believe that it is. I mean, the, the visual simulations are, are not adequate. Mr. Banks, if you could skip a, a couple of slides ahead to the photos of, that were in your presentation of the, of the story polls, which, maybe, maybe it's towards the front, and-
Sir, just for the record, Todd Bore filled out a slip and requested that you have his three minutes.
Yes.
So actually, you have that time.
I used all my six minutes, thanks. But I'll, as long as, at your discretion, Madam Chair, as long as I'm answering questions-
Answer questions, please.
I, I'm fine to be up here, but if you want to call me down, I'll, I'll sit down. So on the lower right-hand corner here is the story poll pictures, and that's taken from, I think they're standing on the roof. Mr. Hashbarger thought that they were on the walkway when they took this photo, or maybe it was Mr. Banks. But that's, this is not a public view spot. Now, you did see in Mr. Hashbarger's photos, which I can't pull up, the view from the road, from Miramar Road, looking out towards the ocean, and it's very prominent. So please understand that one of our big concerns, this is a good way to just see it, you know, the Bore's house is the one to the left in the left picture, and it feels the, the, the section behind 1542B, the blue house to the right that's going to be built, is going to go up and come back towards us. And that additional volume is going to have a substantial effect, not only on the Bore's, but also on the views from Miramar Beach Road where this picture was taken from. And when you look at the story poll images, you can see how dramatic that is. I think the, the comment by the architect saying that there's still other portions of the ocean that you can see, so that's not an impact. Well, I, I would, I would argue with that and think that when you have that big of a blockage of the ocean's view, that that's a potentially significant impact, and similarly, we need to do a decent visual resource- we need to do a decent visual resources analysis, simulations, look at it under the lens of SEQA, and see if it really is a significant impact or not, and if it is, whether it should be mitigated.
I'm not aware of a private view right. Are you?
The, under the Ocean View Estates Homeowners Association case, which was Ortega Reservoir, our Court of Appeal said that, yes, SEQA does not say that if it's just impacts to private views, then that could be a significant impact. But, that case holds that when there are public views that are affected.
As well.
As well, then it's important, then it's appropriate to consider the testimony of impacts to private views. And here you have the Southern Pacific Railroad, Union Pacific Railroad. That is a public viewing place, under, certainly my interpretation of the county zoning ordinance. It's not particularly well-defined, but we grapple with those issues out in Gaviota quite a bit. There's also the roadway from which that picture was taken. And that is ostensibly a public viewing place, although it is private access, but as the applicant testified, members of the public are trying to walk by down their walkway, so there is public use of that roadway. And so, I think that from those two view corridors, you get a public view, and then once the public view is triggered, then we do need to look at the Hogans and the other private views and the Boers', and see what kind of an impact that will have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oberth, please.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
I'm curious what your thinking is regarding the, what, the first, what is it, Santa Ventura, whatever the name is, which I think for the purposes of the staff report, they have deemed it not credible, but let's for the moment assume that we, we did view it that. I wonder what your, what your opinion is of the mitigations that were specified in that document, which said basically, photograph it and reuse materials. Would those be acceptable to you?
Well, I think that's a good start. I don't think that gets to the bottom of the issue of historical significance. You know, is it significant? And if it is, then we need to look at how, if those are appropriate mitigations. There is a legal problem with using a categorical exemption.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just asking you for your view of the, of the mitigations.
In and of themselves, no. I don't think so, because we don't know what we're dealing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
If not, may not.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of staff?
Of course.
Thank you.
As follows, thank you, sir. Is it, is it county's procedure, when you get a report that is not definitive, to get a call for a second report? Or is this the case, is the first time you've done this?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it is indeed. So, we would ask for clarification. If that clarification is not forthcoming, then we would ask for a peer review, whether that be biological, historic in this case, cultural resources, et cetera. Staff's not an expert in historic properties, so therefore, we would consult with someone who is.
So that's typical, that's something you do in an ordinary course of these hearings, when it comes up?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, it's not unusual. In fact, for purposes of staff's review, we would want to make sure, in most of my experience, staff's experience would be with biological resources, that's very common, to have them peer reviewed, so that we can confirm the conclusions in the consultant's report. Again, the consultant is pre-qualified by the county, but they're hired by the applicant. The county is not the one performing the reports. However, the county will use our experts, whether in-house or on a peer review basis, to review those conclusions, those reports and those conclusions, from the experts.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Iveson, please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to see the applicant, we're getting to be 11:30, get, see the applicant or the applicant's agent have an opportunity to, to react to all of the testimony that we've heard in the last half hour.
Absolutely, we are committed to that. But right now, I think we need to go ahead with public comment. We have more speakers. So, Callum De Forest, please.
Callum De Forest, as you know, I, I think you probably know, I am here as an advocate for the preservation of historic sites in Montecito, as well as in the rest of Santa Barbara. I had not realized until now that your commission dealt with historic sites as well as zoning and land use issues. I thought historic sites are the purview of the Historic Landmarks Advisory Commission, as has been stated by others, should not, that be the body to weigh in on the historic and cultural significance of this site? The row of two-story beach cottages is, I feel that the row of the two-story beach cottages is historically significant, in that they represent a way of life of a past era in this era, Montecito residents would go to the beach to swim and socialize. They did not, every, they did not have swimming pools in their backyards. They either belonged to a beach club, Miramar, Edge Cliff, or Biltmore, or owned a beach cottage such as these modest ones, or even more luxurious ones towards Fernal Point. It is the ambience of these modest two-story cottages I would like to see retained. It is your decision as to whether the cottages constitute a historical resource. Although only one parcel is reviewed as a resource, the entire row should be considered. Then the zoning variances and setbacks are another issue, and certainly your purview. I am concerned that the variances, if allowed as requested, would open the floodgates for more intensive development. Three, if not four-story structures on these tiny lots are possible. Would this Malibu look conform to the Montecito general plan? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sue, Joe, please. Dow. Thank you. Sorry, I mispronounced that. Welcome.
I'll be very brief. Let's see. 1546 Miramar Beach is the property that I gave my daughter in 1997. It's two stories, two houses away from the affected property we're discussing, and I guess due south of the Boer residence. She is a resident of Kirkland, Washington, so she'd be here otherwise, if she were not. Her property is 14 feet wide, a two-story versus the three that are intended in this new project. A one-bedroom residence, and is roughly 700 square feet in size. It was the aforementioned Groton House remodel, which was mentioned earlier in today's proceeding.
Ma'am, if you would speak into the microphone a little bit more.
Okay. The one item I noticed that was not discussed is parking, which is a very sensitive area. The area is very sensitive about parking, because it's inadequate, although the new bedroom presumed would only increase perhaps by one user. I basically agree with the Boers' position opposing the enlargement of the residence, and in particular, with their points. The project is too large for the site, it is incompatible with surrounding houses, and disproportionately impacts the neighbors. And any applied variances should be denied or reduced. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Liz Hogan, please.
My name is Liz Hogan. I am a property owner and full-time resident at 30 Miramar, right behind the train tracks. And we look across the beach houses, and we have a beautiful view of the ocean that we enjoy every day. I have a couple of concerns about this project. One, view encroachment from our perspective, as well as from the perspective of the beach, which changes all the time. So you can't just take one picture at one tide or one, you know, season, because it changes all the time. And I also have a concern about the roof line and compatibility with the, the row of two-story houses, as well as the precedent that change in the roof line would make on that row. And I also am concerned about the, the short notice that we were given. We, I received a letter in the mail on Monday, a week ago, and we had 48 hours to write a letter or to submit, and I just don't think that's enough time. Some of our neighbors were unable to meet that deadline, and so I think that adequate time should be given for notifying neighbors. So, that's all I wanted to mention. I encourage and support renewal and remodeling. Everybody needs to do that. The weather is really hard on the buildings. And I know, because I live there, everything rusts and it rots, and so things need to be rebuilt a lot, repainted, rebuilt, but I am not in favor of change in the roof line. And of course, the view encroachment is our number-one priority, and then setting precedent, I think, would just be really disastrous, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Hogan?
Could you tell me the date at which you received notification of this project?
One week ago today. What day, it was the ninth? Is that, it was postmarked the sixth, and we received it on the ninth. And then we were, and then it said we had to have the letter in by Wednesday. So, my neighbor directly behind the property wasn't in town, and so she couldn't, she was not able to write anything, although she would have been here.
Thank you.
Ms. Black, would you like to address the, the noticing issue?
Madam Chair, we did provide the notices within the 10-day period, and also published it in the newspaper. We indicated when comments were to be received by, and it's, it's not unusual, and your commission did accept everything into the record that was submitted today. So, I don't see this, I don't see there being an issue.
Thank you very much. Any more public comment on this issue? If not, we will close public comment. Would the applicant like to speak to any of the issues that have been raised?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Graham Lyons. I represent the applicant, and we would like an opportunity to respond. We thank you again for your time. We were hoping we could have about five minutes to regroup. There's been a lot of information that's been provided today. We did not have an opportunity to see any of the public comment that was provided, the written letters, until this morning. So there's, again, a lot of issues that have come up that we would like to respond to. We just would like a few minutes to regroup, if that's possible.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. The applicant, I believe, is going to respond to some of the issues that were raised. Sir, please identify yourself for the record.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Graham Lyons. I'm an attorney at Mullen Hensel. I represent the applicants in this matter. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this project. We also appreciate the fact that you have held a special meeting for this project. We know you weren't planning on meeting in September, so we thank you for your time. A couple of issues that we'd like to address, and I apologize in advance if we sort of beat a dead horse on a few of these, but there are some issues that are a bit unique here in this situation. And first and foremost is, the historical reports and the historical resource analysis that's been done on this project. I think we would all agree that we would have preferred not to have three different reports on this project. It's unfortunate, but it's what we've got and what we need to deal with. Our position is that the county has done the appropriate level of analysis and review of each of those, and has appropriately done peer reviews of the two reports that have been completed, and based on that, we have sufficient data for an historical analysis of this property. I think, as you know, the applicants were required, as part of their application for this project, to submit a historical resources report. They did that from a list of pre-qualified consultants. They hired SBRA to do that report. Obviously, they paid for it, independent analysis, we're not involved in that at all. Once the report was received, we took a look at it, county staff took a look at it, and we had significant questions about the conclusions, as did staff. Staff reviewed it and made a determination that, in fact, it wasn't acceptable. It wasn't something that they could rely upon to make the findings that they would need to, to approve or disapprove the project. So, they requested that the county have a peer, peer review done by Post Hazelton, a very well-respected historical resources consultant in town that's known. Post Hazelton did their analysis, did their peer review, and they came to the conclusion that the SBRA report was insufficient. Basically, it wasn't acceptable, it wasn't up to the level of analysis that was required for the county to use it as a report for this project. If you review the Post Hazelton report, essentially, the, the problem comes in the application, or misapplication, or no application of the county-specific thresholds for an historic resource. There were questions that were raised, and again, Post Hazelton made the determination this, in fact, wasn't an acceptable report. Based on that information, the county came back, county staff, and appropriately said, this report is not acceptable in its current state. Here's the basis for that. We have a third-party consultant that's come on and said, this is what needs to be done to, to revise it, to make it appropriate. We, in turn, hired Alex Cole, another very well-known and respected historian in town, to prepare a new report that would basically take a look at this from a new view and apply appropriately the county thresholds, and use the peer review that was done by Post Hazelton as a basis, as an analysis of, this is what needs to be included in the report that wasn't done before. Based on that, Alex prepared the report. It was submitted to the county. The county, again, appropriately, based on sort of the hiccup that was, that we had with the SBRA report, asked Post Hazelton to review the Alex Cole report, which they did. They did a peer review of the report and determined that, in fact, was acceptable. So, we've got three different folks that have looked at this property. As I think Brian mentioned before, this has been 18 months in the making, so it is certainly not a lack of data that is, has been a problem here. It has been an application of the county's threshold, in our opinion. So, from that, now you have before you a report by Alex Cole that provides an analysis which concludes that the, the property does not rise to the level of significance for SEQA, and therefore, a SEQA exemption is appropriate in this instance. That report has been reviewed by both county staff and their experts, Post Hazelton. So, not only, in this instance, not only do you have one historian that is supporting this report, but you have two. You have a, a peer review of that report. So, again, is it, is it unfortunate that we have sort of this first report that is inconsistent? Yes. But is it something that could be used at this point to rely on for findings by the county, for any evidence that, in fact, this may have historical significance? The answer is no. We've heard that there are certain, certain evidence that is required by SEQA to be reviewed. One of them is substantial evidence. If there is substantial evidence in the record, then that needs to be considered. I think in this instance, given the fact that the county has reviewed the SBRA report, they've had an expert review that report, that expert has said that that report is unacceptable, I don't believe that SEQA requires you to use that or rely upon that report or the evidence that's provided in that report as substantial evidence. report or the evidence that's provided in that report as substantial evidence. In fact, it's been rejected by the county at this point. So instead, the evidence you have before you is the Alex Cole report, which has been peer-reviewed by Post Hazleton. The second area that we'd like to address is the variance request. We've heard from Mr. Sutillo that, in fact, this is something that should not be provided to the applicant in this instance. In fact, as you can tell from the photos, this is obviously an area of the county that is both unique and also provides and creates some problems from a planning perspective, given the proximity of all of the houses to each other, and then also the unique situation of having that very large railroad setback that actually goes and abuts the properties and many of the property lines for these residents. So actually, having a 20-foot setback is required by the county in that front yard. And I'll refer to this again. In 2007, your commission granted a variance for another property along Miramar Beach Road. And in the findings for that zero-lot-line variance, there was a statement that, in fact, only two of the houses that are, that make up the 28 along Miramar Beach Road, only two of those have the appropriate 20-foot setback. So in essence, the vast majority, almost all of the properties here, do not meet the front yard setback requirement. We are now asking for a zero-lot-line setback for the property, which is something that is actually enjoyed by many of the property owners. And in fact, we believe it's enjoyed by the Boers as well. If you take a look at where that Union Pacific Railroad easement line runs, it runs and abuts the actual structure that they have, just like it would for our property once it's developed. So it is something that's enjoyed by many folks along Miramar Beach Road. And as to the side yard setback, we've heard that the Boers and some of the neighbors are concerned about extending the side yard setback for the new development, that it's okay for the existing development. I think if you look at the configuration of the actual lot, and, Brian, I'm not sure if we have a picture of that first-four-floor plan. Right there. So you'll actually see the new area that is being proposed, which has the kitchen, the kitchen area. It is actually set back because of the unique and odd property lines that are here. Physically, it is separated from the adjacent residents significantly. So it's not as if what is being requested is to take that zero-lot line, that property line, and effectively keep that going right against the adjacent residents. It actually will, by virtue of the fact that the property lines are a bit awkward in this situation, it will pinch in already. So there is sort of a de facto setback from the actual structures on both sides. And again, as I had mentioned before, there is definitely precedent in the county for granting variances in this area for zero-front yard setbacks, both to legitimize existing development and to allow for new development to happen in that same area. And I can refer you to the variances were granted in 2007 for the Coleman project, and the findings that were granted or made for that. And I can, I'll read them, just because I think they're informative, based on the facts that we have right now. In granting the variance, the finding from the Planning Commission was, "Most of the Miramar Beach single-family dwellings, including those adjacent to this particular site, the Coleman site, do not have any front setbacks. The structures on 28 Miramar Beach properties, except two, are closer to the road right-of-way than 20 feet. The front yard variance would validate the existing-as-built condition and would allow the proposed addition to be built at the front property line." So there is precedent by the Montecito Planning Commission in this area to grant variances for front yard and side yard setbacks to allow for, again, legitimizing the existing development and allowing for new development. And then finally, as to views, we've heard a lot of discussion about the potential blockage of views, both from Miramar Beach Road, from adjacent properties, and potentially from the beach. I think, as one of the commissioners pointed out, Miramar Beach Road is actually a private drive. There is a gate that closes it. You have to have a code to get in, so I don't think that that would be considered a public-view area. And again, as a practical matter, I know, when we look at all of these plans, things seem to possibly be larger than they are, but this is obviously a very small lot. And the addition, the raising of the roof that we're talking about, is approximately 3 feet 8 inches. That's about to my knee. So we're not talking about a lot of height here that's going to be added. And I think that does sometimes, again, when you're looking at plans close up, it does get lost in the mix sometimes. But that's really, it's a very modest increase in the height. It does allow for a sleeping loft, so that there is not a bedroom right at beach level, which does present some safety issues for those occupants that are living there. So those are the comments that I have. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does the commission, does the commission have any questions? Ms. Brown, please.
Yes, I just have one question about there. Was evidence submitted today about the dating of certain photographs and the date of this property? And that would seem to be in conflict. Do you have any comment about that? Because that, to me, is what raises the SEQA issue, is these conflicting, this amount of conflicting information that we've been given today.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brown, understandably, again, we have not had an opportunity to take a look at the pictures or determine their source, but I, for one, I'm not an historian. I'm not an expert. All I can do is rely on what the experts have concluded on this particular property. And I have to trust, and I think along with the county, the experts that have been hired. Alex Cole and Post Hazleton have both reviewed this property and have made a determination as to an approximate age. I don't think that anyone has really come to a conclusion on when it was built. And again, because this is, it's a very unique area in Santa Barbara County, there's no doubt about that. And I think we can tell from looking at the photographs, and if you actually go and look at the building records for this area, lots of things happened at different times without the benefit of permits. So it is, it's been an evolving, an evolving area, and I think the historic analysis is really more not pinpointing the exact date that the property was developed. Again, once it passes 50 years after that, then it really is more the thresholds of the integrity, the setting, things like that. So I'm, again, I'm not an historian, and I'm not an expert, but reading through the reports, it appears that, again, pinpointing an exact date is not really as important as looking at the property, comparing it with the county threshold and the guidelines and making a determination. Does it fit? Does it make, does it meet these levels? And I think what we're hearing from Ms. Cole and Post Hazleton is it does not.
Thank you. Any more questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will bring it back to the commission for comments, deliberation, and action. Who would like to go first?
Well, okay.
Mr. Phillips, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, when I was in law school, I think there was an expression, I'm not saying that it ended when I was in law school, that hard facts make for bad cases, or something like that. And certainly, the historic review has been difficult here. I agree with counsel. It's not, I think we can all, I think everyone agrees it's 50 years old. Then what? And it seems to me the manipulation and the prior changes to the property support Cole and Hazleton's view that it doesn't reach the necessary level. We're all very interested in Montecito and identifying and protecting historical resources, but it comes with a burden to the property owner. I don't think it's much of a burden, but it is a burden in the way that would impact this owner. And here's a great example. If you can't change the outside, and therefore, you're losing enjoyment of the property as you might. So I think we have to be careful about laying that designation on a property. I'm more concerned about the view corridor. It gets very tough. The day, I mean, if you carefully put those story poles up and make sure it's low tide, high tide, you know, you're not going to have a problem. If you can catch it on low tide, you know, you might be in that view corridor that we're trying to protect. So that becomes problematic. I'm hoping that MBAR took a harder look than we're able to see today. And so I'm comfortable in supporting staff's recommendation, and I'll make a motion to that effect, should I get the opportunity.
Any other comments? And is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Brown, please. Commissioner Overall, please.
I will, I will second the motion. And if I may, I'll just make a couple of comments. I absolutely concur with Commissioner Phillips' analysis on the historic issue. As far as the view issue is concerned, I'm sympathetic to it, but we have better documentation in the full-scale plans than anything we've been able to see. And I've spent a little time looking at it. Miramar Beach is incredibly eclectic. We've approved, to my sure and certain knowledge, three, I mean, two three-story buildings in the same general area. And I remember very clearly the Coleman property. The, when I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Boer, I asked him specifically what it was he would like to see changed. And this has not been addressed, so I need to reveal it. I can't tell you what he intended. I'll tell you what I heard. I heard that he was concerned about the common area where the entrance to both properties are, that he does not feel is adequately seen, illustrated, or described, or whatever would satisfy him, what that treatment will be. And it needs to be approved, if I understood him correctly, by the Miramar Homeowners Association. I think it's in the plans that I looked at, but not maybe in the detail that he would like to see. I think as a good neighbor policy, the applicant probably ought to go over that with him. And then the other thing that I heard was that jog in the property line where they have the, granted the easement, he was concerned about what the treatment would be in that area, because the new addition to the house that goes to the front property line impinges a little bit into that view off of their entry to their house. And he was unclear what the treatment of that portion of the building would be. Again, I think I've seen a couple of pictures that indicate some, give some indication of how that would be handled, but again, I think good neighbor policy would be, sit down and discuss it. I think we're always faced with situations where nobody likes the idea of construction going up next to them. I understand that. But having said all of that, I support, I seconded the motion, and I can, I will support the project.
Ms. Brown, please.
Madam Chair, I'm not going to be able to support the motion as it is, and for the following reasons. First of all, I think that there is clear evidence that there is certainly historic resource comment, and I believe that needs to at least have a negative report, a negative report, because I don't, a negative mitigation report is what I'm trying to say. I just feel that this commission cannot move forward and approve a SEQA finding when there's this problem out there that I don't think any of, that certainly I'm not qualified to resolve. Secondly, I think it should absolutely be referred to the Historic Landmark Commission for a determination before this body makes a decision. And I'm sorry the motion's on the table, because I can't speak directly to it, because I need to go back to one of the slides, which is the next-door neighbor's house. Can we go there, Brian? It's the elevation. And what I wanted to point out, when I was there at 3:00 in the afternoon, there was sun coming down on the neighbor's patio where that little pergola is right there, that little pointed roof, yeah. And when this building goes up, when it's brought all the way out to the end of the variance, that is going to be a complete solar block. It's going to be a complete looming building. And I can, I totally understand the difficulty you have with this lot, and I can certainly support your side setbacks, but I cannot support the front variance because of the safety issue and because of that character change of the, that neighborhood. It does, from the beach, I was on the beach at low tide. I personally saw evidence that you can see the mountains, and I believe that this clear story will impede those views. I think it will be a distraction. Instead of a, instead of being subtle, it will, that, it will be more noticed than actually the mountains. So I cannot approve that. And I'm very concerned about the clear story giving halo light. The Montecito Plan and Ambiance prefers to have, you know, starlight, and I think that clear light is going to be distracting in that sense as well. So, but really, I think it's the SEQA issue that stymies me the most, and then I am certainly, I'm, oh, and then finally, the Montecito Community Plan Goal Number CRM1 says, "To preserve and protect properties and structures with historic importance in the Montecito community to the maximum extent feasible." And I think to not have a H-LAC review and to not have a thorough, to have conflicting reports here does not meet that goal, and I, so I probably can't support the CDP either. Thank you.
I, this is a troubled one. It really does bother me a lot, because I look at these two units when I approached it Saturday, and I was looking at the two houses, and I thought the Boer property was so charming there, just special, and I thought the other one was nice, too. But I was hoping that in the process of the remodel, that it would have some better compatibility, the two together, because they're kind of like two sisters. They're just really, really a pair of houses. But that being said, we're at a situation here where we're increasing the footage by 32 percent. That may sound like a big number, but in reality, we're still at 47 percent of the FAR for that size lot in the area, so we're nowhere near total build-out. The setback in the front, going to zero, is concerning to me. But as I look at it from the standpoint of other residences, I fail to see a significant impact from anyone other than the Boer property. And so it gives me a little bit of trouble there. I would hope that it would be just a good neighbor thing that could be developed in the process. I think as Mr., as Commissioner Overall said, that if we could work that through, I would probably be able to support it. So if they, if the use of the landscaping and the frontage area, then I think it would be acceptable to me.
Thank you. I think that I am going to join Commissioner Brown in some of my concerns. I want to, first of all, express my regret that negotiations broke down. I think that this is the kind of thing, the proximity of the homes, and the fact that you, the two owners, had moved so far toward resolution. This is the kind of thing that the good neighbor policy perhaps could have resolved these issues. I'm concerned about the view. I think that while there may not be a 24/7 view, I certainly have walked that property enough to know that there are views of the mountains, and I think that this will lessen that. I am concerned about the zero setback. I understand that other properties on that, in that area have zero setbacks, but to continue that doesn't seem the best use of our decision-making. I had one other issue. The historical, it is very, we have very conflicting reports, and that's really unfortunate, because these experts came close to agreement on so many of the issues, but were not in agreement on the issues that, on which we can base our decision. I would support sending this back to Historical Landmark. It seems that committee exists for just this kind of close call. They have the expertise and the history and the resources on which to make a better decision on the historical aspects of these cottages and this setting. So that's where I am. I will not be able to support the motion, and I would support sending it back to the Historical Landmark Commission. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To support my motion, the, I see two issues, variance and the historical issue. The variance language, I think, is very instructive. The variance language, I think, is very instructive. Because of special circumstances, which is a restrained lot for the use intended by the owner, strict application of the zoning ordinance, in this case, can you get into setbacks or not, deprives such property of privileges enjoyed. Now, what can that privilege mean? It means expansion by other property owners. And there's testimony that other people are up to that zero issue. I don't think it's going to impress the neighbors if it's a foot back from zero. So I think that's exactly the variance, the intention of that ordinance is to permit this type of thing. Should they have been the only ones on that strip, I would be voting against it. There isn't anything special. Other people aren't enjoying it. And to, to the chairman's point, I don't think we're sending it back to H-LAC. It was never at H-LAC. And I don't know that we can send it anywhere. We can send it back to M B A R sometimes. But counsel, can you speak to that? I don't know that we can direct H-LAC to look at this.
You recommend I?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Black, please.
And commissioners, your commission can request that the project go to H L A C for their review if you so choose.
And they will do, engage studies, or will they do this on their own?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, no, they don't have funding to independently study, so they would use the studies, they would review the studies that have been prepared on the property and provide comments.
Madam Chair, I could, I could withdraw my motion if there's support to send it to the historical group. Mr. Second, how do you feel about that?
I would not feel comfortable doing that. I think this applicant has spent 18 months trying to get through the historical issue. And I don't know, have no idea how much money they've spent doing it. It just seems to me like it's a delay in the process, and I think it ought to move forward, or we ought to deny it, one of the two.
And we have two supporting experts. And should we see, again, a difference, we'd have some precedent that we'd have to just get it out of here the minute there's a disagreement, which is pretty easy to set up, or maybe not. So I guess I'm going to stay with my motion. I seem to have a strong second and hope, hope I can get three votes.
Ms., okay.
Staff, can you review the process of appeal? I know it goes supervisors, but again, what the supervisors could do, and so just give a.
Madam Chair, Mr. Commissioner, given its location in the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, this project may be appealed. This, your commission's decision may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors as well as the planning, I'm sorry, the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Well, let me just ask one thing before we move on. If perhaps counsel could give us a more definitive description, one more time, of this categorical exemption. What is our responsibility if indeed there is a clear evidence of a significant impact? And there is. There's one report that says there's a significant impact. That's clear evidence. What is, what is sequoia guideline on this, please?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brown. So the record does support staff's determination that the project is categorically exempt. The question before your commission is a separate question, which is, is this potentially a historical resource which would take it outside of that exemption? So the record supports staff determination that it is categorically exempt. It's within your commission's discretion to determine whether or not it is potentially a historic resource that could potentially have a significant negative impact.
Commissioner Idelson.
Sorry, commission then can't react on a significant impact until, unless it's referred to the historical landmarks, and they do. Are you saying that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Idelson, no. It's within your commission's discretion initially to determine whether or not it is a historic resource for the purpose of the exemption to the sequoia exception. Excuse me for the terminology.
And you need a determination first, and then you measure impact.
The impact would be measured through the appropriate environmental document.
And that impact isn't measured if it's not in the first instance, it's still.
It's a threshold issue, yes.
Threshold, indeed.
Yes.
And then perhaps you could ask another question for me. I understood at one time if you had conflicting expert opinion that triggered E I R. What is your opinion on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brown, that is correct. But that would be the opinion as to whether or not there is a significant impact on the historic resource. Here, the threshold question is, is this a historic resource for taking you outside of the exemption? What staff determined was that it is categorically exempt, and the structure is not a historic resource. Therefore, it's still exempt.
Thank you. If I may, I would like to speak to the reason why I think H-LAC may be the appropriate body to give us an opinion on this. The commissioners have a greater experience collectively and individually on this issue than the planning commission does. I've worked little with historical properties, although I am sensitive to that issue. It would seem to me the best thing for us to do would be to send it back to them, have them consider it, have them make a recommendation or a ruling, depending on how they work, and then we could move forward. Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, I just want to be clear. The H L A C can review the project and provide the commission comments. What they don't do is they don't determine whether or not under sequoia, this is a significant resource. That's really for your commission to determine. So I don't want you to overly rely on their review, because they review under their own ordinances, under the provisions of the H L A C, and they don't substitute for sequoia review. So I just wanted to make that clear.
But if I may, Madam Chair, I believe, having served on H-LAC, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they could look at this project and decide that it would be worthy of landmarking, and they could initiate that opportunity, which would be a big signal to us.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's correct. But I just wanted to make sure that your commission wasn't relying on them to make a sequoia determination.
All right. Commissioner Idelson, please.
All right. We have a motion before us. Commissioner Phillips, would you like to restate your motion?
I would like to move to support staff's recommendations.
All right. And the second stands. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes three to two. Thank you so much. We will now take one minute to regroup and move on to item two. Some of the commissioners may have to leave soon, so we want to get this done if we can. Thank you. (pause) The Montecito Planning Commission will be back in session, and will come to order to continue the hearing of September 16, 2013. Moving to item two under the standard agenda, the Wilson Roof Change. Please read that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Paul Zink, Architect for the owner Monte Wilson, to consider case number 13 CDH 14, application filed on May 2, 2013, and to determine the project is exempt from the provisions of sequoia pursuant to Section 15301A of the State Guidelines for the Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Aaron Briggs, and I will give you a very quick presentation on the Wilson Roof Change Project. Project site is located at 116 Aroki Drive in the Montecito area, just north of Highway 101, as shown here on the vicinity map. The project includes the reconstruction of approximately 600 square feet of roof area of an existing residence. The existing flat roof would be changed to a pitched roof. The roof change would not result in an increase in the height of the residence. No grading or vegetation removal would be needed to carry out the project. It is simply limited to changing the area of the existing roof. The site plan here shows the area of roof that would be changed as part of the project. And you'll see here that it's in the rear of the residence. Aroki Drive is located to the west, and the area of the roof change would occur behind the street-facing facade. This photograph shows the residence as seen from the street, and you'll notice that it's heavily vegetated with a hedge and also some trees. And then this is a view from the backyard showing the area of the house where the roof would actually be changed. And it's a little difficult to see in the photo here, but you can see that the roof line of the area to be changed is lower than the roof line of the street-facing facade. So as seen from the street, you won't even notice a difference. The applicant initially requested a waived hearing. Staff sent out the waived hearing notice to the surrounding property owners. And on July 29, we did receive a request for a hearing. It was the neighbor to the south, I believe. And I do not see anyone here in the hearing room in attendance, so I don't believe the neighbor showed up today. Project was reviewed by the M Bar on June 10. The M Bar commented to keep the roof lining continuity with the existing roof, and then they directed the applicant to return for preliminary and final review after action by the decision-maker. The project can be considered exempt from sequoia pursuant to sequoia guidelines, Section 15301A. And the project is also consistent with the provisions of the coastal zoning ordinance and also consistent with the policies of the Montecito Community Plan. Staff's recommendation is that the commission make the required findings for approval of the project, including the sequoia findings, determine that the project is exempt from sequoia pursuant to Section 15301A, and finally, approve the project, case number 13 CDH 14, subject to the conditions of approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does the commission have any questions?
I only have one question. I want to be certain for this hearing, were the neighbors notified?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brown, yes. We sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet of the site, as well as the Montecito Association and the Coastal Commission.
And has there been any response by letter, email, phone call? I mean, you mentioned the neighbor wanted, requested the hearing.
Yes.
Was there an issue?
The neighbor did not identify any issues. The letter is extremely brief. It just says, "I am requesting in writing for a public hearing regarding the Wilson Roof Change Project. Signed, Sophia Holbach."
Thank you very much.
And that's it.
That said, if the commission's ready, I would like to move staff recommendations.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would the applicant like to say anything?
No need.
All right. Would anyone? Oh, I didn't see. Commissioner Overall, sorry.
I just have one real quick question, Mr. Briggs. The M B A, M B A R comment about roof line in continuity with the existing roof, I don't know what that means. I mean, I know what the word means, but I don't see how it applies here. Can you elaborate on that at all?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, I did not attend the M Bar hearing to hear that discussion, but I'll let the architect speak to that.
Hello, my name is Paul Zink, and I'm the architect for the project. And when we were at M Bar, they were asking, why didn't I return with an all parapet solution? My client would like a vaulted ceiling in that one section. This is similar to the photograph that he showed you, in which the peak of the roof, the ridge line, is not going to be any taller than the taller box that's facing the street. So that's why there's no overall increase to the height of the house. M Bar suggestion to me was just return with an all parapet solution, which would make it a flat horizontal ceiling, and my client would like a pitched roof. So when I go back to M Bar, I will show them sketches of the pitched roof and how it relates with the rest of the buildings on site.
Okay, so your hurdle, if you have one, is with M B A R, not with us?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question. Is it that the peak of the proposed roof is the same height as the existing roof on the street side?
That is correct.
And that roof slants back towards us?
No, the roof that faces, it's, the house is basically three shoeboxes. And the shoebox that faces the street is 14 six with a tall parapet.
Oh, so there's a building in front of this building?
There's a building in front of that building, correct. This was just a quick sketch that I put together that I was going to show M Bar, and then we got appealed, so then I dropped the ball and just sort of put it away for a while.
Have you had discussions with the neighbor who appealed?
Yes. We also.
Can you tell me what the concern is?
It has to do with just neighborhood rivalry. There was a fence between the two pieces of property where they had surveyed, and they found out that the existing fence was three feet more on my client's property. And so when they reinstalled the new fence, they had to encroach on the neighbor, which meant moving some of the neighbor's firewood and stuff. But it was all done with a survey and everything, but that just caused a little bit of friction, having to do with the fence, nothing to do with this project.
And that neighbor is lateral with this? It's not behind this house, or?
No, it's this side of it.
It's this side and the same distance from the street and all that?
Further from the street. I actually have a Google aerial map. Would you like to see that?
No, I think it's okay. Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify that this matter was not appealed. We had, no, we had submitted for a waived hearing, and under the procedures, a neighbor can ask for a hearing when a waived hearing is sought. So they just simply asked for a hearing.
Without an appeal?
Right.
Without a financial?
It's, this is a coastal development permit with a hearing, but on real simple cases, we can apply for a waived hearing process. And in this case, the neighbor actually requested a hearing. So if they request a hearing, we go ahead through the full process, which.
Without an appeal.
Right.
Okay.
I move approval of the project.
I was going to ask for public comment.
Oh.
Would anyone in the audience or in attendance like to speak to this issue? If not, I will close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions or motion.
I make a motion that we approve the project.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the project before us.
Madam Chair, I assume that means follow the procedures that staff has outlined and?
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Is there any other business before the commission? If not, we are adjourned.